Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Roberto and I'd like to call the Ashland Planning Board meeting to order for Thursday, July 29th, 2021. Before briefly going over the agenda for this evening, I would just like to acknowledge that I am the Vice Chair of the Board. However, due to the fact that our current Chair Tricia Kendall's husband is the Chair of the Mindus School Committee, I will be acting as Chair of this meeting. So our agenda for this evening is a continuation of a public hearing for 90 Concord Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review, which is the project to replace the current Mindus School here in Ashland. That is on the agenda for 7:15 and that item will be the dominant matter of the evening. After that, we have a Hillside Estate Bond Reduction Discussion. We're going to review minutes from June 10th and June 24th. We have administrative matters and any reports from board members or from the town planners. And so with that said, I would like to invite the applicants to step forward and perhaps give us an update on some things. I think before before we do that update, I just do, I would like to acknowledge that we have received a number of different pieces of the Town Planning Office has received a number of different communications and questions from people in town and that, you know, those various inquiries and questions, you know, I'd say there's four primary bullets that we would like to address, would like to have the applicants address this evening. You know, coming out of those communications from the public. So the first item is the size of the parking lot as proposed for this project relative to the needs of the building, the facility. There were some questions about the boundary lines with regard to some of the abutting property, looking at information on the deed from 1953. So there's some, we can dive further into that. In addition, the application as prepared did not indicate that the project was occurring on a scenic way. Concord Street is in fact a scenic way. So I know the applicants are in the process of preparing a amended application to address that appropriately and address any other concerns that were needs that come off of Concord Street being a scenic way. And that was an error on the application. It was an incorrectly checked box. So I just putting those on the table, like to circle, make sure we circle back to those tonight. And with that, I'd ask the applicants to step forward and if there's any update that they have.
So thank you very much, Bill Beatrice from Plansburg Architects. I'm the Project Manager. I will kick this presentation off. And I'll just say that we did receive the peer review comments. We are working on our written responses and we will be submitting them to the planning board early next week. As we go through today's presentation, we will touch, we will touch on some of those topics that you mentioned and also want to follow up on some of the other comments we heard from the last presentation. So with me today, I have members from Niche Engineering, the Civil Engineer, our Civil Engineer to talk about traffic, members of Stimson Studios Landscape Architect. We have our Construction Manager on the line from Chomit. And we also of course have the owner's Project Manager compass on here too. And I'll just ask everybody to introduce themselves again as we go through the show. And with that, I will share my screen and get started. Thank you very, thank you very much. So one of the things I just wanted to touch on briefly was the floor plans because we talked about it a little bit last time. But I just wanted to go over just to refamiliar, refamiliarize everybody with it, with the plan in general. You know, looking at the first floor plan, it is zoned, it is zoned accordingly. On the west side of the building, we have the gymnasium, the cafeteria and this music room. And these are more kind of community use spaces. In the center, front and center here, we have the academic wing, I'm sorry, the administration wing that, you know, they give, got nice eyes on the entry and the parking lot and control of this front entrance. And then in the back are the academic pods. And these were all these classrooms. So we separated those those two use groups, the community and the academic pods. And we've included here a couple of vignettes, some interior shots, just to give the committee a flavor not only the outside and the site, which we've talked about in depth, but you know, some of the interior spaces. Second floor, very similar to the first floor. We have the academic pods, two-story pods. We have the media center and the outdoor classroom. And again, a couple of vignettes. Here you're seeing the common area, the student comments, the art room, the STEM and the media center. One thing to note is this common, the student commons is this is over, this is in between all these academic pods. And it, so the academic pods feed into this student comments. And so
Before you go on, before you go on, Bill, this may seem, I feel, is there, is the media center effectively taking the place of a traditional library in this facility?
Yeah, yeah. We haven't called them libraries in a long time because they're, they're media centers, sorry.
A long time, what, like 15 years, right? Like you're not that old.
No, 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 no. I didn't mean that. But I mean, you know, the media centers, because you know, they're really just more about, they're more about books. It's more than just books now, you know, it's, it's
Makes sense, yeah.
Interactive spaces, yeah.
And I'll jump in. This is Ken Kovacs, a Principal with Plansburg Architects. And so the term media center is actually derived from the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority. That's how they refer to these spaces. So they themselves have dropped the term library. And they really encourage it for being, you know, multipurpose and encourage etc. And so that's why you do see synergy between those project-based learning spaces such as STEM and having a great relationship with the media center. And yeah, it's a nuance with it, but they, the MSBA themselves have changed a lot of terminology, you might see when we talk about these spaces, but good comment.
The other thing to, I'll just add to that is as it relates to the books and things like that, we're also doing a distributed media and library across there. So over by where it says tech there, there's, that's also where there'll be kind of more localized areas for books and different things that would traditionally be in a library. So
Okay, it's distributed, it's a little bit different.
So we're taking some of that square footage from there and distributing it so it's more localized to the academic wings as well.
Cool. Thank you for that.
Bill, I'm sorry, I may have missed, how many students did you say the school's designed for?
Six thirty-five.
Six thirty-five, yeah. Thank you. So it's the same size as the current school or is it different number?
It's, it's the same size as the Mindus School, current Mindus School.
Let me, let me just clarify that. It's the same number of students as the current Mindus School, right? However, the square footage, because of the efficiencies and the way this is designed, this is a, on a square footage basis, this is a smaller structure, correct?
It's, it's a
This, this, this building is 104,885 square feet and your existing school just tracks slightly lower than that. But again, your existing school was designed, you know, as a high school and adapted into an elementary school. And just based on the MSBA space templates, when you literally plug in a school for 635 students, that's the number from the output. So that's a standard, this is a standard sized school and it's very efficient. And I would just say one thing that the Massachusetts School Building Authority, I would say has nailed down over the years is creating very efficient buildings. So they want spaces that are going to be utilized up to 85%. You know, they want to make sure that, you know, students are occupying these spaces. So that results in a very efficient building footprint. You know, again, they're, they're a grant funding agency and they want to kind of spread the wealth across the Commonwealth as much as they can. So efficiency is number one with them.
Yeah. And there's been some, it's a little confusing. We've had this question a lot about, hey, this, this doesn't look like it's any bigger, right? How can we do this? How's it going to be, meet the capacity needs? And it's a little bit confusing. The new building, as Ken said, it's 104885. The current building is, I think, 96,000, just over 96,000 or something like that square feet.
Even with that basement level, the old locker room from the high school, you're tracking around, tracking nearly 100,000. So you're
So we have the locker rooms, okay. But that also included a lot of wasted space, right? So so it's a little deceiving in that the classrooms are larger, the current standards are larger than the old ones. You have a lot of wasted space like the cafeteria, a lot more hallway spaces and things like that. So we're very confident and if people keep track of some of the things that we put out in the school, you'll know that we actually have more than 635 students in the building today, right? It's a, it's an enrollment certification. It doesn't mean that that's all it can handle. This school in the 635 enrollment with this efficiency has significantly more capacity than the current school. And the, both the MSBA does enrollment projections as well as we at the school have contracts with others that do projections in both the school and the MSBA, you know, are very comfortable with the capacity.
And Paul, what's the maximum strength of kids that can be in this school? Like, I know 635 is the enrollment limit, but is it 720 or 800 or can we go up to 850? I'm just thinking if if we have any more developments come and more kids will move in. So do we have a capacity to solve those things?
Yeah, no. So there's not a hard number. It's probably more driven by our educational program and what our tolerances for, you know, the ratios and class sizes. But all the enrollments projections that include projects that we know about, expected projects, they, we can handle more and we're, all of them show us kind of, we've been increasing, but that we're going to be leveling out and that there might be a level here and there, but that we should be leveling out in our enrollment. And so and Superintendent Adams is on this pretty much daily looking at our enrollment and also the, going back to, you know, our contractor that does the projections for us and every year and even sometimes twice a year. And we're comfortable that that we have a lot of capacity in this new building. And I guess the other thing to note that we went over a lot in the in the public forums and things like that, that's not shown here, but the MSBA also requires the program here that we're doing to show what an expansion would be. And so that's part of it. And that's why things are laid out the way they are. And that we would be able to build a fourth pod that would extend out and take up some of that outdoor learning area in the east without having to disturb any, you know, so that's why that all the drainage, all the different things are not going to be in that space. So if we ever needed to expand, we could just expand without, it's kind of by design that there's an expansion opportunity. We don't foresee that and quite frankly, the MSBA doesn't want us to come back in five or 10 years and say, hey, we're out of space. So they have a lot of diligence around that as well.
Thank you. So moving on, I'd like to look at the site and review the overall site plan, the planting plan again. Talk about buffer zones and there was a question or that came up regarding the new proposed sign. So with that, I will turn it over to Ramon from Stimson and he can walk us through these items.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Good evening, everybody. I'm Ramon Ibarlicia. I'm from Landscape Architect. I'm from Simpson Studio in Cambridge. You know, we're really excited about, you know, how this project is developing and will continue to develop. And I know we touched on a lot of this last week, but you know, I'll just kind of go through the site design just again. So to orient yourself on this plan, you can see dashed in red, the existing Mindus School sort of sprawling across the site from east to west. We're locating the new school just north of that, which you can see there in white. So the existing site is pretty congested. If you're, I know you're all familiar with it. So when it comes to kind of buses and cars and dropping off. So a really great feature of this site design is a separation of buses and cars. So cars will enter the site from the location of the existing easternmost curb cuts. So we're holding that location on Concord Street. They'll continue around in a excuse me, counterclockwise manner and deposit students sort of where you see that blue, that sort of the deposit students, right? Where you see that blue arrow, which leads to an, which is an accessible path that leads directly to the main entrance. Cars will continue on that road, making either a left or right turn on Concord Street. This route will provide plenty of queuing to keep cars off of Concord Street. So faculty and visitors will access the site using that same access point. We've got a 250 space parking lot, which we'll kind of talk more about in more detail about later. That's tucked to the easternmost portion of the site. So it's out of view from Concord Street. And again, we'll be directing all pedestrians from their vehicles in that parking lot to a safe crossing. And then again, into that accessible path into the main entrance. So onto buses, buses will enter the site from the location of the existing westernmost curb cut, holding that location. But we've moved parking from that road. You know, close to Concord Street, buses will be able to drop off and pick up with direct access to and from the main entrance. There's plenty of queuing space for all 19 buses that service the school. There is a loop road on the project. It goes around the back of the school to allow for fire and emergency vehicles safely around. This also allows service vehicles to access the loading dock, which you'll see at the northernmost side of the school. So it's facing away from Concord Street and away from the butters. This road will have a security gate kind of at the intersection of where the bus drop off breaks up from it. That'll restrict vehicles around the back of the school during school hours. It'll be for essentially service and emergency vehicles only to drive around the back during school hours. And just to talk about the program, we've worked very closely with Flansburgh to establish this. And we're really excited about the exterior programming and its connection. So on the site plan over to the easternmost portion, you'll see the letter C. That's the outdoor learning area that's located immediately adjacent to all of the academic houses in the school. They all have direct access. It's essentially just a large lawn and tree landscape with some hardtop areas for teachers to pull out tables and teach lessons outside. There's some seating areas again for more intimate lessons. And there's kind of a larger lawn oval within that space and that can accommodate congregation of about one of the great, one of the grades of students. So about 200 students. The activity on the western portion of the site, this is sort of the active side, the more exciting side, I guess, with we've got new, new ball fields, new softball field, baseball field, new basketball court and a new playground with new play structures. And they're all located kind of immediately adjacent to not only the main entrance, but the gymnasium and the cafeteria within the school. So there's just kind of a great connection there from what's happening inside to what's happening outside. You can go to the next slide.
Yeah, that's a good overview. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I just want to touch quickly on the planting design again for the school. We're proposing a native mix of deciduous and evergreen flowering trees and shrubs as well as perennials and grasses. And most of the flowering plant material is these perennials and shrubs and trees will be focused towards kind of the main entrances of the schools and gathering areas sort of where students will be. And around the site, we're just looking to establish this really great native canopy tree coverage. And one of the things we touched on last week was sort of related to planting is the disturbance of steep slopes. So we're cutting into the hillside to provide access all around the new school as I just discussed on the, you know, access loop. And of course, we're also providing temporary construction access road into the site. But, but I want to say the finished condition of the school, we'll see all of the disturbed areas mitigated with seeded with a restoration seed mix and native restoration trees to help kind of heal, heal those areas back in and stabilize a slope immediately. You can, yeah. Another thing we touched upon last week were the buffer areas, particularly along the south property line. So essentially that access road, the southern line of that access road is basically a 30 foot offset of the property line. So where that lands is about the existing limited disturbance today where those fields are. And so we're maintaining that existing dense thicket of vegetation along that property line and to buffer the access road and then to buffer the parking area. We've got that triangular portion. It's kind of six feet wide at its narrowest, flaring out to about 64 feet wide. And within that, we'll have a bio retention area and we'll also have a dense planting of deciduous and evergreen trees to help again buffer that parking lot. And the other areas, just to touch on how close they are to the, to the boundary. The west access drive at its closest is going to be 26 feet off the property line. And that's okay.
Not quite sure what happened there.
No, that's all right. I think maybe you hit the green triangle.
I'm sorry. I don't know.
While Bill is setting it up, can I ask a question, Ramon?
Sure.
You had mentioned the, the cutting into the hillside and planting some vegetation to sort of heal, heal that, if you will. Can you talk a little bit more to that sort of purpose of that, what that means and how you evaluated kind of the damage versus what needed to happen to mitigate that damage?
Yeah, sure. I think that's, it's a multi-point question. I'll, yeah, do my best, but you know, feel free to have anybody else jump in and answer it. But when, when, you know, I think that the larger point comes to when we cited the school and we kind of understood that we needed to keep this, you know, level access road around the back of the school. And for this site, that seemed to be, you know, the best. And it was the best we evaluated a number of locations for the school, but that was the best location for the school. And so we've done our best to mitigate cut it, we knew, we knew we'd have to cut into the hillside and we knew we would, you know, need to cut down some trees for that. But we've kind of done our best by, by creating a retaining wall to reduce that the amount of cut into the hillside. And then of course, you know, we understood that I think, you know, just developing on this site in general, we would need some sort of restoration planting. And I guess to go more into the restoration planting, it's again, just sort of a hydroseed of We we would need some sort of restoration planting and and I guess to go more into the restoration planting, it's again, just sort of a hydroseed of uh native shrubs and and grasses and perennials uh which eventually will just allow to will allow to grow. Uh and we'll also be planting a number of uh uh restoration trees about twelve feet on center. So so they'll they'll go in quite small, but you know, in five years' time, they'll they'll start to to grow back in. I think for the other slope, uh you know, as I mentioned before, the existing Mindes School spans the entire uh width of the property. So allow to allow safe construction access while school is still going on. That's an important, I think, piece of this project uh is that, you know, the school is going to be constructed while school is going on, but to limit disturbance to that school function, we're we're proposing uh an access road uh off of Fisk Road and 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 we've kind of determined the best location for that. You know, we're working with Shaman and and I think, you know, Kent or Bill or anybody, if there's anything.
We could.
Yeah, I I'm I'm gonna just build on 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 that question, just back to you, Ramon, just just kind of get into the essence of it, you know, the practice that you have in those steep grades that that will stabilize, correct? The method, yes.
That's right.
And then that healing process to kind of reestablish reestablish what you're doing, you know, what's what's the duration of that? How long would that take to kind of reestablish that kind of natural, that natural plane?
Yeah, Eddie, I I think Eddie, uh you can, I I he's he's asking to unmute. He's he's from my office here. He's got his hand raised and I think he's he's a great, uh he's he's had a lot of experience on healing insights. He's great.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Eddie Marshall. I'm responsible with Simpson. Sorry about the mute and unmute. Well, I I guess, can everybody hear me? It's the it's the first thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can, Eddie.
And so uh first thing, when we think about when we cut into the slopes, it's uh first, uh what is kind of the we want to have it like a uh two and a half to one or a three to one slope. This gives us the opportunity to actually plant it and uh a a a allow those both uh grasses, trees and shrubs uh to actually take hold. And so what we first, the the first thing we want to do is shrink the footprint of where the cutting happens. So we want to make sure that we are not being too aggressive, want to hold on to as much of that existing vegetation. Because that's that gives us our best buffers. That gives us kind of our best opportunities to kind of screen from the neighbors. So uh starting there, then looking at grading and then applying a native plant mix. And so what we want to do first is have those grasses take hold. And this is really, this is what will keep the soil in place. And then the trees and shrubs uh will have the ability to to kind of reinforce what the grasses are doing, but they'll do it in a natural way. And a lot of it, e- even things like the switchgrass. And if you've dr- driven on any of the interstates in Massachusetts, you'll see switchgrass along the side. So it's a it's a great plant that that kind of volunteers in, stabilizes things, but it also has kind of a great look as well. So it there's kind of a win-win that you get over time. And we do think there's a nice combination between that and the existing woodland to the north side of the school.
And and I guess to clarify my question, as I'm hearing this, I I kind of hear two, three different kind of potential aspects as to what we do with a slope when we cut into it, right? There's the the structural stability of it and what what happens. And I think you just described that, Eddie. What happens to assure continued structural stability, right?
Right.
Then there's the aesthetics piece of making it look good, right? Because when we cut into a slope or we remove things, we kind of want to replace that and heal it with with sort of the aesthetics of making it excellent. Um and 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 the third piece that I'm thinking about as I reviewed the the stormwater documents too is is I'm curious about the impact of kind of water retention, if you will, when we cut into a slope, right? Um and I'm not as familiar with the site. I'm just learning about this relative to the wetlands, but I do want to hear about that and and because I do have some concerns when we're cutting into a slope, if that slope is functioning, if that hill is functioning to retain water and protect us from flooding. Um I I do want to hear about the decisions as to how we cut into the hillside and assure all three of those elements, right? Structural stability, aesthetics, but also making sure that that hillside can retain the water that's already coming in or additional stormwater that we might expect with a storm event. So can you speak to all three and how those factors were considered in the grading decisions that you made as far as how much you want to cut into this?
This, so when we think about uh cutting into that slope as it as it uh pertains to kind of the uh hydration that may be behind it. First of all, when we think of uh it's it's part of those combinations, I'd like to combine the answers first. When we think about when we do cut in, we want to cut in uh is is as little as is needed. A lot of that really starts at the building and how we want to have this landscape and all the roadways and everything makes sense with the with with this building footprint. So obviously, we we are starting with a finished floor elevation. Then we obviously on the north side, we want to be mindful of of what it's like to access the loading dock. When we cut in, if we were to hit water, which the the thing is, is wh- when I look at this slope, i- i- as we move to the north, we are also moved to a higher elevation. So it seems unlikely that we would actually hit a vein of water that things wouldn't be evident now. I mean, if we were on site and we were seeing areas that uh would be look look like it would be part of a wetland or something like that, that would start to send up flags and say, when you guys go to kind of into this, but there was nothing like that up there. Even when when I look at the plant types that 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 are up there, they are all kind of that uh upland hardwoods is is what is uh much of that woodland setting that that that's behind us. So when I think of kind of making sure that we're uh being sensitive to the existing conditions, it, um I would be very surprised if we ran into any water. Uh we also want to think about when we do cut in, making sure that we have the proper kind of silk fencing to keep things stabilized. And even during construction, we want to be really mindful of where the runoff is going in. This is part of the construction management's team, but we'd work with them and look at and and working with us civil engineers to understand, making sure that we're controlling. Uh once we do open up the site, making sure that we are controlling where the runoff is going, how the silt is being controlled. And and this is part of kind of everybody's daily practice. We we do this on on e- every site. So uh same best practices would would be be applied here as well. And then kind of getting back to how do we heal it back in? This is where it uh the how, when I was answering it before, it's it's making sure we starting with a slope that is manageable. Once the slope becomes too steep, I don't care what you're putting on it, it will wash off. So we used like to lean that back, so keep it a little bit more natural. And so sometimes you do see situations where they will use like a riprap. That's because they have no other choice. We like to think if we can have it planted and we wa- on on that north side of the site, I want to have that woodland feel like it's almost jumping into the classroom. I we we're we're really trying to blur that line when you're sitting in those classrooms. Uh you know, to to actually feel like that woodland is 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 coming in close. That is a, it's it's a beautiful part of the site. If we had our brothers, we would have probably pulled that building a little bit more to the south, but you know, the classroom size is what it is. So we were we we kind of work with the design team to make sure that the uh cut was is uh limited as as it could be. And so we are, the 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 other part of this is is we know all the existing trees are the trees that you own now, and we don't want to disturb those and and unless we absolutely have to. And also, there is something about older trees that we know that it 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 takes a while to grow large mature trees. And we want to hold on to as many of those as possible, because they're 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 some of our best tools and making sure that this building really feels like it's part of the site. You know, we we want this building design and landscape design to feel like it came out of the same office. Is our goal.
And I think, you know, to to expand on your question, uh you know, Jared is here from Niche Engineers and and he'll go a little more in-depth into the stormwater discussion uh a bit later on into the presentation.
Yes, thank, thank you. So uh I think moving on.
If, yeah, yeah, does that answer your question at all?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. That's a good question, Anna.
And uh well, yeah, I think I sort of lost my place, but uh I think uh, yeah. One one issue that uh came up was was the location and and design for the new entry sign. Uh and something I mentioned last week, but we didn't have the graphic prepared for was uh without that that we're holding the location of the existing sign. It's it's currently a wood sign. Um but the school has requested uh an electronic sign and and that's that, you know, two foot seven inch, eight foot panel that you see there. Uh it'll be on both sides and it'll be fully programmable. Uh you know, and you said, you know, we 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 extensively walked the site down and planning the project and we did notice a series of stone walls. And we just wanted to contextualize that a little bit and bring it out to Concord Street. So uh currently, we're proposing a stone base uh for the sign and 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 so so that kind of aluminum cabinet uh for the for the electronic sign will sit on a nice stone base. It'll feel kind of like it's really part of the site. Yeah, I think you can go to the next one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ramon. Um that was very helpful. Um so now I'd I'd like to look at um the parking lot and and our main parking lot. And so I'd like to um like to go through the existing conditions, our analysis of how we got to wh- where we where we are. Um our um parking lot planting, uh accessibility and the lighting and photometrics around the site. And for this, I'll turn this over to uh niche engineering, uh our traffic consultant and Faisal, if you want to introduce yourself and you can take us through the next couple of slides.
Was he made a co-host or?
Nope, sorry, who's who's presenting?
Uh it should be Faisal from Niche Engineering.
Okay, he can unmute himself now.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everyone. Uh my name is Faisal Hosseini. I'm uh vice president and principal at Niche Engineering. Uh I've been practicing engineer, uh traffic engineer for the past thirty five years. And um for for the par- for the parking questions and uh existing parking is consists of ninety four spaces. And there are additional six spaces are used by the kitchen staff. Uh so when we uh evaluate or, you know, calculate the required number of parking spaces, uh we we typically determine what's the absolute minimum of the number of spaces. And for that, we use the uh the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh parking generation for and they they define them by land use code. For for any type of use, like if it's a building, it was uh an office building. Uh and if it's uh elementary, for the elementary school, there is a land use code uh five twenty. And then that land use code uh provide a uh a uh what do you call it? A factor for calculating uh the required number of spaces based on the two variables. The first one will be based on the number of students. And the uh the second one will be based on the number of teachers. And for this uh for our calculation, we have used the number of students because it's determined we know that the number of students. And uh so we we did the calculation based uh and and then uh based on those uh variables on factors. Um the 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 trip generation or the parking generation handbook is a compilation compilation of a lot of studies conducted by the Institute of Transportation Engineers throughout United States. There are many studies done for each uh land use. And it's kind of the standard of the industry that we use uh for those calculations. So based on our calculations, we have uh determined that the the minimum number of spaces are eighty three spaces based on the student population. And that's a again, as I said, it's the absolute minimum. However, there are other uh factors that apply, we apply to it. And then it it depends on the use of the uh uh of the facility. Each uh school basically use the facility other than education. And each town tend to use this their school differently. So for this school, we have again, uh if it's based on the use for it for athletic purposes, uh for like additional uh meetings, neighborhood meetings uh or any other activities. So it was determined that the number of spaces require needed are uh two hundred, which uh two hundred fifty spaces as as provided. Uh and in order for us to kind of have a sense, how does that compare with other schools? We have done uh at Niche, I have worked on at at least about thirty schools in the past times. Uh and then uh and we have selected some schools that are kind of to get a nice cross-section uh which are similar also in in size to the uh Men- Mendes School. Uh as you can see, you know, looking uh at the at those towns and the schools. And then if you look at the last column, basically, that's where the calculated uh the student per parking space. And then you can see like Mendes uh is really kind of stacked right almost in the middle of it. And it's it's almost exactly the same as Hopkinton, for example. It's a bit uh higher than Milis, which is Milis uh was recently built. And Norfolk, the same thing, one point eight uh as compared to two point five. So that that gave us a level of comfort that, you know, those variables are consistent. And those rates are consistent and and does not give us any alarm in terms like, oh, you know, larger number or smaller number of spaces are being provided.
Faisal, could I jump in here and just kind of summarize a little bit and you can kind of keep me honest and 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 make sure I'm where I'm bored? The zoning bylaws do not, the question is, you know, why do we have two hundred and fifty spaces? Okay? And the zoning bylaws do not mandate a certain amount. Um it is, you know, it's it's really dependent upon the use. And so the uh eighty three spaces that's in your traffic report is kind of a general guideline that establishes the minimum quantities. What um what you we're seeing here on this slide is um your analysis uh based upon several other schools, um your professional opinion um of how many spaces we should need, we we would typically need. Um and and here what we're saying is, you know, looking at the ratio, because every school is different and every town is different and every program is different. So there's no one set standard. So looking at this chart, we're just comparing students to parking spaces and coming up with with a ratio. And here it's for Mindes, it's two point five. We did students divided by the parking spaces and we got two point five. And using that as a data point, looking at multiple other schools, we're confident as design professionals that two hundred and fifty spaces is where we need to be.
Yeah, I mean, basically, as indicated, it does not give us any alarm in terms like the the variation in in the rate is is basically consistent uh with with the other schools. And as you can see, the numbers are a bit different from one to the other based on, as I said, on the programming and the use of the facility itself, so.
All schools are different, all sites are different. So some sites may accommodate more or not.
Yeah, and and to add to the to the bylaws, the bylaws typically handles all kind of uses in the town. Sometimes they don't really address the schools, because the schools is considered, you know, a given in every town. So they don't want to dictate uh you know, the rates of of the number of parking parking spaces provided. And and then also, you know, schools are not built every you know, seven to ten years. They're, you know, fifty to more years sometime.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um can I quickly ask a question at this point? In the two fifty, does that include the kitchen that parking that's behind the building and the accessible parking? Or are those additional at this point?
That's including everything, uh you know, including staff, including kitchen, including everybody.
And they're one way and the parking along that emergency where near the fields, I believe there are some accessible parking. So it includes all those quantities or are those additional?
Those that's outside.
Nope, those are outside the two fifty, if I may jump in. So two fifty is the is the is the lot in the front of the building that we've been talking, is actually this this lot here is two fifty. So we do have some auxiliary parking behind the school for maintenance staff and and that that you'll see in the master plan and we And we have striped some ten spots on the access road, which we will show in a upcoming slide.
So when you create that ratio, those numbers don't add up. I mean, so when you're looking at the ratio of that parking, that two point five that you just shared, shouldn't all those numbers be also added to get you that number? Or is it solely this?
Yeah, it depends on the use, the use of those spaces. I mean, as you can see, that that roadway is gated basically. So there is no access to the general traffic all the time and those kind of being there as a support, you know, for parking in those athletic facilities. And there are a couple of accessible spaces as you know, overall, we have provided enough accessible spaces, which is double what the required by MAA board. And then by ADA. So so I would not consider those part of the count because, as I said, they're kind of locked in. They are not being used regularly.
And you.
And it's intended that teachers and staff use this lot to park on a day, day, day to day basis. Correct, Faisal?
That's correct. That is correct. Yeah.
And so a kind of a follow up to that originally. And Mr. Hussein, am I pronouncing your last name right?
That's correct. You do it.
You had you had you said at a minimal eighty three spaces would be needed. Does that include the analysis of teacher parking or just students?
That's including everything. The factor is really includes everything.
Okay. So I go ahead. Sorry, Bill. Go ahead.
Sorry, if I could just jump in and add some. Really focus on that eighty three, that eighty three is the most meaning. I almost wish it wasn't in the the traffic report. Because also the traffic report on the day they observed, it was September eleventh, two thousand nineteen. So they were on site, they counted the ninety four parking spots. And at nine thirty in the morning, it was ninety seven percent full, which means there was ninety one cars there at nine thirty that day. The eighty three is, it should be removed from the report. It's the most meaningless statistic ever. On the day at nine at nine thirty, we surpassed that just with the basic operation of the building. So let's not focus on on that at all. I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that 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 particular number, I wish it wasn't even in the report. It's it's baseless.
So it would be, I think it would be helpful. Mr. Hussein, if you could, if you could, Hussein, if you could give us a more accurate number, right, a more accurate minimum number. So that because once it's in a report, it's something that I is a data point that's that that I do believe gets analyzed, whether it's by us or members of the public who want to participate in this discussion. And so I think it'd be helpful, I think, to get something more accurate to respond to Paul's point so that we have a better understanding of what your recommended minimum and max is. And we have a better visual of that, you know, that data that you provided relative to other schools. It reminds me a little bit, I have a teenage daughter who'll say to me, well, other parents allow their kids to do this, this and this, right? And I'll say, well, I'm not other parents. And that, you know, that slide reminds me a little bit of that. And so I also wanted to kind of ask about, and this may be a question from Paul Kendall, it may be a question for our planning department. Kind of what the what what is the vision of of how we want to use that parking space? You know, thinking about the current location and where it is, it is arguably walking distance to other public, public parking spaces, right? Not the most convenient. I've been there on a on a parent night and I don't like to walk there. I just want to park and sometimes you have a hard time finding a space. But I am curious how we, the communities is envisioning using that parking lot other than for the school relative to, you know, walkability to other public parking. And also how we intend to use it for sports versus how we're using it now, you know, what would be? Are we planning sort of a different use for the for the school that way where we might envision more parking necessary? I noticed there's a there's a music room in the school. That's great. Is there kind of a vision of using that building more for for a performance space, et cetera, community space? It'd be helpful to hear more about that so that we have a better understanding of, you know, how we compare to other towns, because I don't know how other towns do those things. And when I see how other towns do it, unless I know exactly what their situation is relative to parking and walkability and community space, it's very hard to to trust, oh, we should be just like Weston, right? So the folks I would like to hear from, I guess, are Paul Kendall and and our 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 town folk who the planning department, just to understand better what we're planning here as far as community use of the parking versus other parking around, et cetera.
Yeah, so I can I can take that. And I think you make some 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 really good points and and you you kind of hit the nail on the head as it relates to this parking lot, right? Two fifty would not be the number if we're talking about this as strictly school use, right? That would not be the two fifty. The two fifty really goes from this is the largest investment the town has made in itself, right? This is our biggest investment. It is, and we've we talked about this from the get go of the project, we harp on it in our committee meetings, that this is a community space. And so we envision it to be heavily used. It's going to be the go to place for a lot of different things. And we actually have two music rooms in there and that music room space isn't just music room. There's a dividing wall and we can we can show you some other examples of some renderings we have that almost make it a great conference space, right? It's this, it's this place where it's multifunctional. It's it's the go to place that we're going to be doing those things. And so the the idea is if you talk to anybody, whether it be the youth sports, anybody who's 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 gone to any functions around town, right? Every place we have events, whether it be sports, whether it be curriculum nights at any of our our elementary schools, right? They will tell you the parking is a disaster. And to give you some context on that, the community center, Saturday mornings during the the sports season, anybody who's ever went over there. So what I did this morning is I counted the spaces, both in the the line spaces and the gravel by doing just a distance measurement and saying, okay, divide by nine, because that's the width of parking spots. And, you know, that count would be between one forty and one forty six of legitimate parking spots there. And anybody that knows that just when they have soccer there, that goes well beyond there, right? It goes to their parking on the the access road to the state park. They're parking all over the places where they shouldn't be parking. And that's before the it's not the park, right? The park's not open at that hour. We, you know, I used to live right over there and it's a disaster. It's a disaster if anybody's gone to a curriculum night at Warren. Warren has a hundred and fourteen spaces, right? So so it's really about those kind of things. And here we have the sports fields. So they're going to be heavily utilized. They're going to be the newest, best fields we have. So they're going to be heavily utilized. And then we have the gymnasium, which is going to be our nicest, you know, gymnasium potentially, you know, maybe second to as far as desirability for renting and activities to the high school, maybe. But we have that, we have the music room, we have all these things. So it's very likely we'll have multiple things going on, right? And so if you take it from that, that on a soccer day, there's a hundred and fifty cars there. And the community center making that impassable sometimes. It's a disaster. You know, you talk about events. I can tell you that the school doesn't tries to coordinate and plan its events because of the lack of parking. Whether it be, hey, we're operating the school as normal. Could we get away? If it was just the school operations, could we get away with a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy five spots? Yeah, we could. Right? We have roughly a hundred employees and, you know, other transient cars. But if we wanted to, the third grade was having a performance and wanted to invite parents. You know, the parking and safety has always been paramount. We split up nights where we wouldn't necessarily need to and say only third grader, only neighborhood does this this night because we don't have the parking capacity. We've had lots of issues at Warren. If people know there, we've had the police come and tow vehicles because they're parking on Davis Farm Road and blocking it so that an ambulance couldn't get by. So this will be heavily utilized. And the other thing to note is, even if we said, let's let's figure out a different number and it was two hundred and twenty, or we arbitrarily pick that number. Understand that the rest of the pavement isn't changing. The loop road is still the loop road. The parent drop off loop, we can't shrink that. We don't want to shrink that because we need that we have about we have probably a little over fourteen hundred linear feet of queuing space there that will will take anywhere, you know, easily take seventy, probably take eighty cars on site. And we could probably even sneak them forward a little bit more, right? That solves the problem that we currently have with it backing up on the fifth onto Concord. If we were to start trying to shrink that road, we would not be solving that other problem. So even if we tried to take away some of these parking spots, it would only be shrinking that pavement in the middle, creating an arbitrary, you know, arbitrary little patch of, say, grass that would be unusable for anybody. We wouldn't want anybody there anyway. So it's it's one of those things I would hate to see as both community member, the the chair of the building committee, member of the school committee, for us to invest so heavily into this project and then somehow find out in the future, wow, we really limited ourselves or we didn't, we we didn't solve the parking issue. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean we want to go exceptionally high either. We don't want that. We've we've been engaged with the sustainability consultant, the green engineer from the get go, who's who's weighed in throughout the process on how we laid out the parking and and our impervious pavement. And, you know, they're they're comfortable with this. So I think you really hit it on the head in that the driver is how we're going to use this. And we we really have the opportunity to have a lot of things going on here. And I can tell you even from activities that could also take place in a parking lot like this. At Warren, as part of the Warren Dads, we used to do bike rodeos for the kids. And we would put little courses and we would do all those things. And it was tricky because even with the small number of people we would have at the event, the parking was tricky. Here, if we have that little bit of extra space, it gets affords us the ability to do that and hopefully have the space to accommodate the parking. So it's really one of those things. And if people want a formulaic way to do it, as was said, the the zone our zoning bylaws, this falls under the other and it's completely under the purview of the planning board and the building inspector. However, if we forget this is was a school and we said it was just a place of assembly. In the use table, there is a place of assembly ratio. And if you take your capacity, it's, you know, one spot for every four seats. So if we envision our capacity and Bill, you can keep me honest is what the capacity of just the public spaces inside would be. We're probably pushing the thousand mark just with those, not even talking about the fields. And so if you wanted a formulaic way that you could, you know, think about that, if this was just a place of assembly, that would be reaching and exceeding your two fifty right there. So I guess that was probably long winded, but hopefully.
No, I think I think that's a helpful, that's a helpful response in the sense that you're giving us context. This is not, obviously, those of us who live in Ashland know this building and we know where it's located. But it's helpful to understand the why we need more, right? More parking and you're giving us the visual, the school's not isolated in a way where, you know, we're excluding the community and you're envisioning more of a communal space that is going to attract more people than attracts now because it's going to have certain amenities that we don't have as a town. So it was helpful to hear that. Thank you.
Yep. And I just want to kind of build off of what Mr. Kendall just stated, that I've been working on public schools for over twenty years. And I actually think it's refreshing that this planning board and the residents are asking about the parking because typically at these planning board meetings, we're asked to add more parking. And between our firms, being a very sustainable firm and Simpson Design being ultra sensitive, we don't want to add any more impervious pavement than we need to. And that's 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 the game here because that is more stormwater management, et cetera. So we want to find a nice balance between the function that you're doing inside, that you're doing outside and your day to day minimums. And so, yeah, just going back to data points, the point that Faisal brought up is is kind of a necessary evil to the process, but that's what the Massachusetts School Building Authority requires that we have a set point. That's not reality. You design this, you're going to regret it. Your day to day activity for this school, getting the teachers in there with staff is at a hundred. Then you bring in visitors during the day. You're already spiking up to one twenty five. That is getting pretty much if you design that parking lot. And again, as Mr. Kendall stated, the loop road is an emergency vehicle access and delivery on the north side and the west side. The parent drop off accommodates seventy cars. That's not changing. That's going to get the cars up Concord Street and it's going to drop them off at the front door and it's going to give them enough queuing space to pace themselves back to Concord to do a nice left and right turn out without bunching up. If that's reduced, you're back on Concord, building it up. And then of course, separating the buses is a go to. So all that pavement, as stated before, would not change. You're targeting that parking lot right in the middle. If you reduce the two fifty that on our analysis of looking at other schools, you, I guarantee, are going to regret it five years down the line because you're going to lose flexibility in the performance of the school and the flexibility of what you can do at that school. I've seen it time and time again that when typically when I go in these planning boards, they're asking, why aren't you adding more? Can we add more parking over grass areas? This school, I think, is well balanced. It meets our lead criteria. And when it comes to opening this school, day one, you you have the flexibility built in. You can accommodate the great activities inside the building and outside the building. We can't tell you what's going to happen if you're going to have a thousand participants week to week in the auditorium and the gymnasium, but you better plan on it. And that's what this reflects. And there was a lot of time that went into this with the school building committee over the years, developing this. And that's what we're bringing to you. And so I think if we're looking at reducing it, I think that's just a reduction in your flexibility in the future. That's just my experience working on public schools for the last twenty years. And that's why we have engineers like Faisal onboard to validate that we're designing in the right level. These have also been submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority where they know every inch of the building and every inch of the site that's being developed. And they have never brought this up as a concern that we are over developing the site.
Yeah. And and just to piggyback on that, Ken, the other, the other thing to note is the peer review comments, you know, they they looked at the parking and things like that. And, you know, and and they're, they obviously were comfortable with the the number as well. So I I would, I I just wanted to reiterate, I would, as we've talked about a lot, the parking a lot in the the building committee. And during our value, our our fun little value engineering race we had when we had the luxury of doing an estimate around during the the steel spike. But we parking was one of the things, okay, can we swap off twelve spots to save a little money? And it wasn't a popular thing because we all knew that. And, you know, so I think you can also, we have the parking consultants, we have the designers also saying it, and we have the the peer review, right? And the peer review had has no horse in the game, right? So we also have that, but but also just, you know, my thing is I would regret terribly if we asked the taxpayers for this huge investment, the biggest investment actions ever made in itself. And we're kicking ourselves because we wanted to shave off twenty spots or something like that. So.
Yeah, if I can add to that, Mr. Kendall, I think I agree with you a hundred percent. If we're going to shave twenty spaces, I wouldn't even consider it. Given all the justification, I mean, the use that's going to be the the area or the building is going to be useful and the athletic and and also the potential for the school maybe to expand in population, then, you know, the demand for parking is going to be there. So and and you look at the space, the layout, you have the you have the green space, you have the buffer, you have everything in in place. You are not compromising anything else. So technically, we are, we we kind of, our recommendation, our professional opinion, as as Bill said, is really to stick with the two fifty because they would be used in our opinion, based on what we hear of the use of the space.
I I just, I just want to step in quickly here. I I I think this commentary from you, Mr. Hussein, from you, Mr. Kovacs, from you, Mr. Kendall, I think it's, I think it's all very helpful for for my head as I think about this and think about the feedback we've received from people on on the lot with kind of their views and perspectives. I mean, there's been a lot of thought and discussion that's gone into this clearly. And, you know, the the couple of other things that I kind of think about as I think about, you know, this, at the end of the day, you know, this this also represents, you know, weekend public parking for farmers market. It just, the proximity to downtown Ashland is pretty close. There are various events that happen during the year that happened down in the, you know, around where the farmer's market is and that then traversed to Mindus School. Um, I, I just think that this is, you know, this is remote public parking for other events on the weekends. Farmer's Market, I mean, you name it. Um, and it, it takes that traffic out and away from downtown. It decongests, you know, front street and a lot of those pieces. So I, I mean, I, I think it's, you know, I think that's another kind of point to me in addition to what you've raised. And, and the one, oh, one other connection point I have is what would the challenge, would there be difficulty or an ability to do a uh, a solar array similar to an Ashland High School on this lot in the future where the town want to make that investment? I understand there's some equipment, the thermal, the thermal equipment is in one portion of the lot, but would there be an ability to do solar, covered solar array for a portion of this lot?
Yeah. So, so, yeah. So that's, that's always been part of the plan. So this will be uh, all set up to accept that. So even, you know, where, where we can do conduit ahead of time and things like that. So it's always been planned for photovoltaics on the roof and photovoltaics, uh, over the parking as well for those two strips in the middle.
So you're saying as this is built, as it goes in the ground, as this plan has it, the groundwork would be there to do photovoltaic over solar over this lot?
Yeah. I mean, it'll probably be, and, and Ken, you can keep me honest here, it'll probably be, you know, kind of at the edges because you don't know where it needs to be in, in, inside there. So would the, the asphalt would probably need to be cut and, and things like that to, to get it there, but it's, it's always been part of the plan.
Yep. That, no, that's correct. We're, we're, we're targeting those two intermediate lines where they're, where they're striped right now without the islands. And that'd be coordinated with any of the geothermal equipment that's going on. And that'd be a double canopy. So you'd satisfy kind of the north and south parking spaces, that whole length.
And could I ask, and could I ask an expansion question? Paul, you had mentioned that if the school population grows, right? Um, the number of students, that there is kind of a, a, a location on the site plan that we could expand onto some green space that we could, we could grow the school building or the, the school. Um, if our kind of imagination and, and potential view of what this parking lot will do for our community is off, for example, I mean, hopefully it's spot on, but let's say we don't need as much parking. Is there some way for that expansion, uh, footprint to be towards that parking lot rather than the green space? Is that a, is that a possibility or, or not the way it's set up?
Yeah, no. So, I mean, it may be, may be helpful. I, I might be able to bring up like the presentation from town meeting that has the expansion dotted there. Um, give me a second here and I.
In other words, what I'm imagining, and please somebody jump in and correct me, is that if we increase students, right, these kids are not necessarily driving, so they're not necessarily going to be the, the increase in the parking lot, right? They, so we may need to grow the school, but not necessarily the parking lot. That's a possibility as we grow, right?
Possibly a little bit. So as we, as we grow, if we had a new, uh, pod, that'd be ten classrooms and all the, um, personnel that go along with that. Um, and as we grow capacity, there might be the, uh, the personnel that do support services that grow. So that could be an additional twenty spots that are necessary just for staff. Uh, and, and then if that's happening, then our population's growing, right? So when we have events, that's likely, you know, so it, it's, it's likely that, you know, uh, that we would need more parking with that as well. Uh, it would be somewhat proportional, not exact. It's not a linear thing. But hold on one second. I'm just trying to get the.
And I, and I get that. I think, I think it's hard to predict, right? How it's going to break down. I'm just curious as far as expansion of this plan, whether it's a possibility to expand into the non-green space.
It, 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 it wouldn't be the way the design is because of the main, mainly the ground source heat pumps that are, uh, taking over most of that parking lot. And then there's utilities on the south side and then on the loop road going to the north. So it's been strategically planned to expand into, you know, you can see right there, uh, to the east. So we're not interrupting any of the main utilities. That's going to be a, you know, a, a, a large disruption that would ma- make us shut down the school, create, you know, utility bypasses. And so it lands itself right into that east, into the green space that you refer. Um, and again, this was something that the Massachusetts School Building Authority requires us to look at. And I, I think quite innovative based on that, that pod academic house architecture lends itself really well to expanding.
Yeah. And, and it wouldn't be eliminating, it would, it would be eating into a little bit of that.
Yeah.
Outward. And the other challenge, um, is it, is it Anna or Anna? I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter because I've lived, uh, in multiple countries. So however you want to say it, but Anna works for me.
Okay. Yeah, I, I got it. Um, so the other challenge would be if you were to ever try to, um, to take an expansion and go south, uh, is the geothermal wells. You couldn't put footings and things like that. Um, you know, so, so it's, it's a great, it's great, you know, hey, you know, if we can keep all the, all the green space, uh.
Is there any way, is there any way to consider moving some of those geothermals in a way to give us that flexibility? I, I'm not doubting Paul, your thought that we're going to need more parking as we grow. Um, but I want to give the future Ashland a chance to not lose green space as we grow.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't want to, I don't want to tie us down to expanding into the green space that we're in love with right now with this plan, right?
Right. So, and, and I think the thing, the thing to note is we're all pretty confident, you know, and we, we obviously don't know the, the future, but we're confident in the capacity of this building where we don't see the need for that. And like I said, the MSBA is, is pretty particular in not wanting us to come back in ten years saying, whoops. Um, you know, and we don't have, I mean, a lot of people, they keep on always bringing up the Marathon School in Hockington, right? We don't have a legacy farms issue, right? That, that's an ex- exceptional, uh, project, obviously. That's more units than we have in half the town. I mean, it's ridiculously large, right? So, um, we don't see, foresee anything like that. And so, and I can tell you that the superintendent is very conservative and I beat him up all the time over the, hey, is six thirty-five okay? Is six thirty-five okay with these spaces? And, um, the MSBA and superintendent, everybody's pretty confident that we wouldn't need this expansion in the next twenty years, right? So, uh, we're really leveling off in our, the, although all the projections from both the MSBA's consultant and, and ours, um, have us leveling off. And even if we didn't level off, if we continue to go up a little bit, um, we, this would still, you know, handle a much, you know, this has a lot more capacity than our current school does. So I, 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 I completely see and, and, and maybe the other thing I can bring up is back to the, the current site plan that there really isn't a better, better spot to expand because we also talked a lot about that in, in there as well. So, sorry.
Um, we, we spent a bit of time on, on the parking. There were a couple of other areas we wanted to get to. So I'm not trying to end the conversation on this topic, but, um, if it's okay, could we continue on and cover some of the other areas? Is that right, Anna? Okay. Um, and the rest of the board, you guys, okay right now? Okay. Right. Go ahead, guys.
So you. Yeah. All right. So back to the parking. I'm just, um, the, the, well, this, the, the next portion, I think, i- is more related to planting than it is, uh, necessarily parking, but, uh, something that came up, uh, last week was, uh, you know, the, the planting as it relates to the parking lot. Way, you know, it, it's two hundred fifty space parking lot as we've discussed. So we're providing one tree for every eight spaces. That's thirty-one trees and all those trees will be, uh, within five feet of, uh, every parking space. Um, but we are seeking relief from those internal planting islands for a lot of reasons we discussed. And, and, and also I think most importantly, we've had, uh, meetings with uh, the school's facility groups a- and they've requested that we make snow clearing as, as simple as possible, uh, because of the nature of the site, right? It's a school and, and, and they'll need to clear that parking lot as quickly as possible in the morning to allow people to access the, the site safely. Uh, and, and so we've done that and we've eliminated the, the parking islands, uh, within the school. But we have, uh, created this kind of, uh, necklace around the, the, the parking lot to, uh, you know, not only store snow, but provide areas for, uh, tree planting. And all, and all that. Um, we, as we, I, I mentioned snow storage and we could speak more of that, uh, later in the presentation. Um, but, uh, you know, I, we can, we can kind of continue on if that's all right.
Yeah. Yeah.
And sorry, sorry, Ramon, if I could just add a little bit. So the other thing about the, the clearing is this is the, the building that opens first in the district. So it's the earliest one as well. So, um, it's very important that the DPW can, can, can quickly and efficiently, um, clear this. And as we talked about before, uh, even if we put islands, we could not plant them with shade trees because of the geothermal wells as well. So, um, th- those are, you know, some of the additional, uh, commentary on that.
Yeah. And just so, if I could just piggyback on that before we move on, just so everyone's clear, the relief we're seeking is that the, you know, the town bylaws are looking for I, little planted beds in between here. And the takeaway here is that we're seeking relief. So for ease of snow plow, snow plowing, but we are really screening the perimeter of this, uh, uh, parking lot as much as possible. Um, and so one of the other things that we talked about or follow-up from, uh, last, um, last week or last time was the, uh, loop road and the access parking. And so as we discussed last week, it was a request from the, uh, fire department and the police department, where we reviewed this with them, that these, these, uh, spaces be, uh, striped. And so we have laid them out accordingly and we will have, uh, ten spaces along that loop road. And a couple of handicap spots as needed.
On, on, on these spaces and on this, this road, um, leaving aside for just a moment, the handicapped and the handicap spots and accessing the fields and, uh, you know, being able to, you know, watch the fields as part, uh, spectators, um, like cause the gate get locked and unlocked. I mean, I, to me, I think security and the concept around this is good. I think it's sound. I'm sure there's an enormous amount of thought behind. So then we're going to, in the evening, somebody's going to have a key, he's going to unlock this gate. Again, I'm not worried about fire or police, of course, but like somebody's going to have a key, he's going to unlock this gate. They're going to leave the gate open. People come in and they park and somebody locks it or doesn't lock it. And then this, this road is open all night long and people can access it from a particular standpoint, like there's two hundred fifty spots just over the other side. I, if the fire, the police, fires or police need it for their purposes, I'm fine with that. They have the key. I, I trust them to open and close. But I, I'm not so sure how I feel about creating spaces here, giving keys to recreation uses and, and having this then be unsecure um, from that capacity. So I'll be quiet while you answer.
Yeah, no. So, so I think, I think the misnomer is the use of the word security. Um, it's really a traffic flow. It's, it's really a traffic thing. So, um, it is during the school day going to be down. It's going to be, uh, able to be opened by the, uh, fire and, um, and police via their, their radios and also be tied into the, to the admin. They can buzz in people for service deliveries. Then off hours, it'll be up. No, no one, no one with no keys. It's, it's not one of those. It's, it's an automated gate.
Okay. This isn't a steel gate that has a huge lock on it. Okay.
Yeah. So it's no- nothing like that. It's, it's, it's one of those lift gates. It's going to be open off hours by default. And it's not about security. So there are, um, you know, s- many, uh, security cameras around there and all those go back to the police. Um, so that road is accessible, but it's also got the appropriate, it's not lit, but it's got the appropriate amount of lighting for, for the loading dock area and all those different places. So it's not like some dark place where people can go and, and, and be, um, so, uh, so it's not about security. It's about that traffic flow and keeping, uh, during the school hours, keeping that traffic to the front of the site where it's supposed to be.
And the concept here is more about the recreation after school hours and just allowing for some, just some organization, if you will, of, of what, of this side.
Right. We have the capacity on the road to allow for that parallel parking. And, you know, so the, the right thing to do for them is we, they're going to have equipment. They're going to have all these other different things, uh, to allow that access. And, and instead of having them drive through the loop, drop it off and then go park in the, you know, that we, we have the ability to do that there. And that's the, that's, that's the reason, re- reason to allow it.
Thank you for the clarity.
But it's, it's, it's a fair question. And, and I think we also said security during the presentation. So it's, it, it's definitely not about security.
Yeah. And I guess I can, you know, quickly touch on this, uh, accessible parking that we're providing, uh, on the site a little bit deeper. Uh, in the main lot, we've got nine total spaces and those all comply, uh, with ADA and M, M W A B, uh, requirements per distance and, and slope, uh, and all, and all that. Uh, we, we are also providing from that main lot, um, an accessible route down to the fields. Uh, there's no distance requirement set by, uh, either of those governing agencies for, uh, you know, distance to the fields, just, just to the building. Yeah. But anyway, as, as, you know, as the town has requested, we've, we've provided, uh, uh, additional parking spaces as we just discussed. Uh, and then i- in the back, we've got, uh, one, one van space, uh, for those, uh, facilities, parking spaces, and those can lead either down to the loading dock or, or in it, any into the rear entrances of the school, uh, via an accessible route. And we can go to the next slide. Yeah.
Yep. Thank you. And, um, I'll just touch upon this real quickly before we, uh, move on to the next, uh, series of slides. But ob- obviously as we spoke about last time, the site, uh, we are providing site lighting uh, around the perimeter and at the driveways. And then we have pedestrian lighting closer to the building uh, for, um, you know, uh, well pedestrians. Um, we've also included, uh, with the, uh, planning board package, our, uh, photometric plan, uh, to control, uh, light spillage. Um, we did get a couple of comments from the peer review. We do have some spillage on, uh, some neighboring properties that our engineers are addressing and they will resubmit a proper photometric plan or a revised photometric plan to limit that spillage. But the, but all site lighting will be contained to the site with the all fixtures that will have the proper cutoffs required for lead uh, and to minimize light spillage on, uh, adjacent property. And so I know we're going pretty long here, but I'd like to round out this presentation and look at some of the site engineering. And, uh, for this, I'll, I'll turn it over to, uh, Jared Gentelucci from Niche and he'll walk us through snow, uh, the snow storage plan that we've developed, the drainage plan. And as we mentioned, um, last, uh, last time, we did a little investigation on, um, a pipe, uh, outfall pipe on the property and we'll give it, and, uh, Jared will provide us with an update, uh, as, for that as well.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Bill. Um, good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members. Again, Jared Gentelucci with Niche Engineering. We are the civil engineering consultant for the project. Um, so starting with snow storage, this plan in front of us, so all the areas highlighted in blue, those are the areas we are designating for snow storage. Uh, we have about sixty-five thousand square feet of site area that can be utilized for snow storage that at, at a six-foot height, that gives you about four hundred thousand cubic feet of snow storage volume. I think another way to put this into a better context is for every inch of snow that would get plowed off of the onsite roadways and parking areas, it would result in snow piles about roughly about three inches tall. So it's about a three to one ratio. So, um, and, and we have snow storage located all throughout the site. Um, we will be in compliance and the school will be in compliance with mass DEP, um, regulations and, uh, and guidance on snow disposal. Uh, and one of the key elements of that relates to the stormwater management system. You don't want to pile snow on top of drainage structures, catch basins, and, and in particular surface basins. And you'll notice that, um, from our, our last presentation, we talked, uh, in more depth about the stormwater management system. We have a rain garden in the middle of the bus, uh, pickup drop-off loop. And we also have an infiltration basin that's in the landscaped island on the south edge of the main parking lot. You'll notice those are not designated for snow storage, uh, because in compliance with those, uh, DEP guidance documents, we want to avoid piling any snow in those surface basins. And again, obviously off of any catch basins, area drains, any inlet structures to make sure that when that snow starts to melt, the drainage system can do what it needs to do and can collect that runoff as that snow melt occurs.
Thank you.
And so jumping back into, uh, storm drainage at our last meeting, I did go into a bit of detail. And so jumping back into storm drainage at our last meeting, I did go into a bit of detail on the overall storm drainage design. And and really, the one thing I wanted to hit upon tonight is that we did mention that there was an existing pipe that we had found that discharges at an intermittent stream. It's located at the back property of one thirty Concord Street and and runs through the one thirty Concord Street property. And so we did do some additional investigations with the help of Shawmet and some of the other team members. And what we found, and Bill, if you can go to the next slide. What we found is we did a number of test pits out on site and we did some video inspections. And what we found here, you can see here, this is a just a snapshot of our survey plan. And the line you see in red that starts at the south end, which is where the intermittent stream starts and heads north. We did discover a twelve inch perforated corrugated metal pipe. It it appears to be essentially an underdrain system for the existing athletic fields. And there were a few, maybe six or eight small perforated clay pipes that tied into that at at various locations throughout the length of that pipe. So we were able to trace it all the way back to the north edge of the existing baseball field. It goes just a little bit into the wooded area on the north side of the field. It appeared at the north end of the pipe. We were able to trace it all the way to the end. And it appeared there what might be an old dry well or an old drainage structure that is is probably from many, many years ago, is is dilapidated. It was hard to tell if it was a dilapidated structure or may have just been some some rock and stone. But the pipe does open at the end. And we were able to observe some flow in the pipe coming in at the north end. And so what basically what we found is that this is an underdrained system, but it also is picking up some runoff and some seepage off of the hillside that's to the east of the east and northeast of the existing ball fields. So what we are planning to do or already in the process of doing is we will be revising our documents, our plans, our drainage design and our storm model calculations to account for these existing conditions. Most of this pipe will be removed. But what we will, what we are planning to do is to essentially reroute the the water that is being run through this pipe. We'll be rerouting that water around the east edge of the site and bringing it back over to the intermittent stream. So we will be submitting revised documentation on that very soon. And and we can present that to the board. We also have had the same discussion with the Conservation Commission. We'll be providing that same documentation to the Conservation Commission. And you can see on the right, we just some pictures. This investigation was done just this past Monday. So you can see some pictures. The picture on the top right, it's a little hard to see, but spray paint on the grass shows the approximate location of that pipe that we were able to trace across the field. And then a couple of snapshots of the video inspection itself. And and we can certainly provide copies of the video inspection if the board would like a copy. We plan to provide copies to the Conservation Commission as well. So that's where we're at with the pipe investigation. I just wanted to touch upon two items real quick. I know we're we're running fairly late, so I'll try to do those fairly quickly. As the chair mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are going to resubmit our site plan and special permit application to note that Concord Street is a scenic road. A couple of the main criteria from the zoning bylaw when it comes to scenic roads is you don't want to be altering or removing any trees or altering or removing any stone walls in the right of way. We are doing neither. We have very limited work in the right of way on on Concord Street. So we do believe that we are meeting the intent and the requirements of the scenic road, the bylaw, the scenic road section of the bylaw. And and one other item I wanted to mention as well, because this comment has come up before is just in relation to the survey plans and in particular, the school's property line. So our land surveying department did the survey for the site for the project. They went through a process, as they do with any project, they went through a process of retracing the property line for the school. And that involves a number of steps. They did research into the historical deeds, record plans and collected all of that information. In addition to that, they also located almost all of the monumentation out on site. There's a number of stone bounds, stone and granite bounds, drill holes, and they located pretty much all of them. There were a few that oftentimes it's hard to find every single one, but they were able to find probably eighty, ninety percent of them. And our our survey project manager, he has about thirty years of experience doing land surveying work. He is a licensed professional land surveyor. And and what we show on the plans, we do believe is accurate with respect to the property line and is accurate when you go back and compare to the deeds, the record plans and everything lined up really well with all of the monumentation that we found on site. So I just wanted to, just to mention that, that that we feel the property line as shown on the plans is accurate based on the record information.
Thank you, Jared. And I think with that, we'll open it up to the committee if they have any other questions from the team.
I don't have any questions for for the the engineering folks and the the design folks, but I do have a question for Paul Kendall just too. Can you tell us a little bit about the the sign? I know some of the residents or or I let me rephrase. Some of the public comment we've received mentions concerns about the sign that's been proposed for the school. I'd love to hear kind of your reasoning for it and what the school, the committee that was, you know, proposing that had in mind for it.
Sure, you you're, I think, assume you're talking about the electronic sign and the way.
Could you also speak to what kind of where that is, how visible that is from the scenic route position? And if and if in your view, we need to think about the scenic route regulation relative to that sign or or if it's completely unrelated?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't think of it in in return in regards to that bylaw because like the bylaw is more for protecting, like Jared said, the the trees and the rock walls in the right of way and ensuring that we keep the that aesthetic and and things like that. And, you know, to Ramon's point, we wanna wanna embrace that with this and and try to make it look like a little rock wall and and try to embrace that. But as it relates to just the sign itself, if you know of any, if you've driven through any of our other schools, right? The signs, it might as well just say Mendez and that's it, and not convey any other information if it's not a digital sign that is easily changed. You look at the high school one that, you know, that was in rough shape and it was always the letters were falling down and the signs that are that require manual changing, just they're useless. So it's either really something that just says Mendez with a nice image or something like that. Or it's something that actually communicates to the community. And so I think that's one of the things that we always talk on the school committee and everything about communication. And that's something that is, it can be a great tool for us. You know, it's something that as people drop off, drive by, the events, whatever's going on in town, town meeting, town events. There it's all can be displayed there. It's going to respect the neighbors. There's gonna be buffering to, what's that, the east of the sign between that and that neighbor. So it's it shouldn't negatively impact any neighbors. And I I I think from from that perspective, it it's it's not valuable to have a sign that attempts to communicate anything unless it's this type of sign. And I think that communication for both events and anything that that the town or school wants to convey to the the public is important. And so I I would, I would definitely recommend that we that we do that. We just put in an electronic sign in at at the high school. And yeah, so I I would, I think that communication mechanism is important. And I think it's orientation and whether it's there, whether it's in between the two roads or where of it is, as long as it's right there, as long as it's, we still have the sightline that's properly set back from the road. And we maintain the buffer particularly to the to the east there with that neighbor. We wouldn't want in the evenings or whatever for there to be any disturbance. You know, so I I think that communication is important. And I think where we cited it here and and even if we, you know, come back and say, hey, we'd like to move it a little bit here or there, we'd always be respecting that buffer and the neighbors. So I I personally, I think it's a very valuable tool and 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 would would, you know, urge the board to support that, but hope that was helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Kendall, I mean, do you think? I I'm actually, I was just looking at a Google Street View of Concord Street. And ironically, sitting on like the grass, not on the other opposite side is one of those large blue like roadwork flashing signs. So it's just, it's ironic. I don't know, like, does it have to be that close to the road? I mean, you're trying to communicate with the people who are entering the site by and large, right? People who are going to the school. Could it, you know, with regard from a scenic road perspective, I mean, does it work if it were just pushed into the site and additional number of feet just to, you know, it's just, it's just a thought or an observation.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can look into that. I mean, I I don't think it's just for those that are daily entering the site, right? Because this is a community space, right? I I I think it's important that any, you know, I can foresee, you know, Ashland Day being here, I can foresee almost any event we want to do in town that this would be a great opportunity to do that, whether it be, hey, let's move the farmer's market here. Because like like you've pointed out, farmer's market isn't easy to park at most times either, right? On the on the nice days and things like that. So I think it's 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 communicating townwide events, not just school, school related events. But I think we need to be ensuring that we're we're not, you know, in any way, shape or form, we want to be sensitive to neighbors. And the sign is going to be orientated so it's lateral light. And and this is, you know, and and Jared and Ramon can probably have more information on these types of signs and and the and the amount of light that they admit is is going to be low, right? And so it's lateral and we're gonna have ensure that there's proper screening there. But setting it back too far, now we probably need to clear some some screening so that it's still visible from the road. So it's that balance of getting it far enough away from the road where it's not hitting you in the face. It's still allowing the sightlines you need. You know, so it's it's possible, maybe in the median between the things, between the roads might be a better option and can sit back a little bit more. You know, we can certainly, as as we go through this, look at it more to to find the the sweet spot, if you will. It's a fair point and and we don't want it to obstruct sightlines. We want to be and we want it to be aesthetically nice anyway. So even if the neighbors see it, we want it to to be something pleasant to look at.
I mean, just to add add to that as kind of a different point. I am a little, you know, I would love to see how it's actually gonna look. And I know it seems like a small thing, oh, it's just a sign, but it is a scenic route. And we're making a lot of assumptions about how we're gonna use the space. And I and I hope you're right that we're gonna, you know, this is gonna be a central communal space, if you will. But that, you know, depending on how it looks, that sign may be more appropriate next to Town Hall or it not on a scenic route. So I I'd like to see what it actually looks like, like a like a like a rendering with, you know, the green space that we see as we approach that sign and and how it looks, how it looks. I I think we as a planning board should see that and and have a better understanding of how that fits within the aesthetic of the scenic route. And whether that's an appropriate location for that kind of sign.
Yeah, and 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 that's a perfectly fair point and I have no problems. And I would expect, you know, even, you know, if this gets approved, I I I'm expecting to come back to all the boards that we've gone to and anyone else that would have liked to have us for updates as this goes. And and I think the the style of this delivery mechanism probably needs to be spoken a little bit about too. And if you compare it to something like the Public Safety Building, that went through a different process. That's your more typical design bid build kind of mechanism where we are to to do in a construction manager at risk. And the difference is there are the, when we go for the permitting, where we are in the process, right, of design. And so they've they've shown this here, but we haven't finished like the, we were in front of design review last night and they made a comment about and it's a very valid and good comment about the gymnasium wall as it faces the athletic fields. And that's looks big and blah, right? There's not a lot there. And we're really at a point where we're choosing the 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 colors and stuff like that. And then we're gonna be adding the details of whether it be different colored brick, a mural, whatever it is to to kind of break that wall up a little bit. And so the the key thing here is we're still in refining the design. We're in an earlier stage of the design than if we had chosen to go a design bid build route. Where what that happened, what we do there is you you actually complete your design and your construction documents to a further point. And then you put it out to bid and that you're essentially purchasing someone to build what you've written down on paper. Here, we've brought on a construction manager. And keep me honest, Bill, when is the sixty percent CD due to the MSBA? What are we saying?
September.
It's September, so. Yeah, September eighth, so. So so that's part of it. And I have, I have absolutely no problem with coming back for these types of things for feedback. You know, and and also note note that one of the differences between this and some of the other special permit projects is we already, you know, we have a town committee, a large committee. We have, I think, eighteen members right now, fourteen voting members on the building committee that comprise comprises a lot of building professionals, including architects and also just community members and town officials who are also doing this. So we have a lot of eyes on it. And I think that coming but coming back and showing you what is actually going to come up and be want to be placed there is a perfectly valid request. But right now, I couldn't, we couldn't give you the sign that we planned to put there. Because it's not fully designed yet. And and but we're happy to come back when it is and and get some feedback on it.
And and maybe you could give us like a, like a a spectrum, if you will, of potentially where it could be, right? Like, you may not be able to tell us the exact design or the exact way it's gonna look, but like a general concept, like or something similar, so that we just understand that how bright will it be? How big will it be? You know, how will it fit with just something? I I don't think we're, me personally, I'm not looking for the final design. I don't. That's not what I need to approve. I I just want to understand generally how this will look on a scenic route.
Yeah, and 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 that's 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 fair. I I my only concern about that is I don't want to, I could certainly ask Jared and Ramon to send some cut sheets and samples of the types of signs we might be looking at. But I don't want to, I I I would be concerned that that would be what people are tied to. I would still want to come back and say, here's where we think we're going.
Maybe we think about, this is just an idea, when we think about set separating the sign out of the, out of the decision. And, you know, get through the, you know, presuming it was for get through deadlines and then we could certainly circle back. I don't know if that's feasible or if that works from a regulatory perspective. Just a thought.
Yeah, and from a from a logistics perspective, I'd refer to, I I defer to Peter on on what would need to occur there. You know, if you wanted to approve the special permit and just put the condition that we come back when we we have this for, you know, we could do it that way. If excluding it from this, I don't know whether that would be more cumbersome from a process perspective. It doesn't matter to me either way. I would defer to Peter if that whichever way is most efficient for for the board. But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, we want to be inclusive and get feedback on it. So happy to do whatever works.
Yes, this is Peter, town planner. I think if that was a direction at that point, you know, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Still did not, I did not, I did not forget about my microphone troubles from earlier. No, that'd be something that would have to be conditioned, I would say.
Yeah, and and like I said, we'd be totally happy with that. Happy to come back to to get feedback on it when we have more concrete stuff. And but And but also, Anna, if you, if, yeah, if you would like, we can send some examples. I can ask the team to get some examples of what they're, what they're gonna think, think about bringing to our committee first and. Those aren't necessarily what'll be the, the end, but it'll give you some context if that will.
So you, you guys have presented everything that you wanted to present tonight. You're saying, I'm saying you guys, apologies. As applicants, have you guys presented everything that you wanted to present this evening? And that, so to, so want to be mindful of if there's any public comment. So my planning board, is there any other topics or issues that we haven't discussed that we want to raise at, at this point or any other questions?
Just, just one, a comment actually about this, the slide that's, that, that's up. You know, currently there's three curb cuts for the school along this road. And so this is, is this kind of bringing it almost down to two curb cuts? We have one for the buses that's on the other side. And now the other two are almost being combined into, into one, is that? It would be this one and the one for the buses, is that right?
That's right.
That's, that's correct.
And, and in bringing these two together, I believe that the right hand side of it is exactly where it is now. And so it would be bringing the other one close to, to the right hand side of this. And but no, no trees would come down in, in that moving.
I, I, I actually think that there are a, a couple trees, some of them not in super great health. Along that area that, that may have, so no, nothing along, I'm sorry, nothing along the eastern edge, but you know. On the western side, there are a couple trees that may have to come down.
Yeah, I, I was actually just, just meaning in terms of the scenic route and the right of way.
I see.
And, and I think someone said earlier that there's nothing, there would be no trees coming down. In, in the, in the right of way of the.
Right away. No, that's correct.
So that would leave a greater expanse besides this. This kind of combined curb cut here with the two roads and the one on the other side and the rest of it then would just become.
And it's all kind of, you know, able to be accessed from the school without having to cross any vehicular route. So it's all this kind of nice contiguous. Open space right, right out of the front door of the school.
Great, thank you.
Hey, deep relax me, you guys, folks, okay? All right, Peter, Emma, anything before we open up to public comment?
I know, I'm also, I think, you know, I think the presentation was. Covered all the points that, that, that was necessary to open up the public comment.
Emma, if I could turn to you.
Do you want me to explain the public comment procedure?
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Yep. So if anyone would like to make a public comments, please use the hand at the bottom, the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And then I will invite you to unmute one by one. So I see that Mark Dissoni has his hand raised and I'm going to ask him to unmute.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Most of my, most of my comments came last night at the Build and Design Committee. And the people that are on the call now, I gave, I gave basically a whole lot. In different areas. So I'm going to try to become less than that with a couple of things. And. One of them is going, one of them is going, I, my questions are based from the page. I'm looking at the Ashland Codes. Of section five point O, a parking and five point one. The parking areas. So this, the part, can, can you put it up, the, the parking side with the plant and? Again, please.
Let me pull the slide up.
Okay. Now, my questions are going to be involving not the trees, but the parking lot design itself. And for the Ashland Codes, you mentioned, I think, I think Paul Kendall did. About under the parking tables, the word others. And that's on the section point five. In the Ashland Codes. It's, it says individually determined by building inspector upon advisory report on planning board. Were required in compliance with section nine point four, the site plan review. Okay? I'm, I understand they're probably, they're probably gone through the building inspector in that part. Yes or no?
Has this been through the question? So Mark, the question is, has this been through the, the building inspector at this point in time?
And, and, and the section nine point four was being used as he was doing the, as the inspector was being advised.
I, I doubt the building, Peter, you, you should advise me, but I don't believe the building inspector would have had any. Would have done anything with this at this point of time is it hasn't been approved by the planning board, I believe. Is that correct, Peter?
Yeah, so just Peter, Magic Town Planner. Just to say, the first step in this process, Mark, is for the planning board to make a recommendation. And or advisory report. And so that would be through this review and then this goes to the building commissioner. Therefore after. So we're still in that first step, which is being reviewed by the planning board.
Okay, now, s- section five point one of this, of the same code. The parking areas with eight or more spaces. How many space, spaces are there in the parking design right now without the trees? How many, how many spaces are there right now?
In this parking lot, there are two hundred and fifty parking spaces.
Okay. And. How many entrances?
Two entrances.
Okay, can you, can you use, if I were a pointer with a mouse, whatever, can point where they are?
And Bill, yeah, there's a slide that indicates the entries if you can just advance to it.
This might be a clearer picture. So we got an entrance here.
See, it says, it's right there, Mark, right there. And then to the east, right, right there.
That's right, along the south edge of the.
Sorry, something.
Okay. Yeah, I, I see, I see the little black mouse going around. By the words two forty-one standard and the van accessible. Is that one way or a two-way entrance exits?
Within the parking lot, they're two-way, but then they lead to a one-way. Circulation route. That all goes around the back of the school. So again, entrances are two ways. So you can enter and exit, but you have to make a left turn when you're exiting.
Yeah, that, that's one of the reasons why I'm asking, one of this, this one, those hours you put up there.
Okay, good.
That helped, that helped. And the one that is one exit. Let's see. How many feet for the street frontage? Is it from?
The, the first parking space is. Say about sixty feet from the front lot line, from the street. I don't have that information off the top of my head, but. You know, using those hundred foot lines as, as a kind of a guess, it's, it's, you know, if, if, if that's what you're asking coming off the. Street, how far is the parking lot away from Concord Street? It's, it's probably about two hundred.
Okay.
Hundred, hundred and fifty, hundred.
Okay, and I, okay, thank you. And I'm reading the five point one. Parking area, eight or more spaces, it says shall apply and underneath is one through seven. Apply to, and the one is pocket area shall require back in on a public way. Is that in there?
Sorry, Mark, can you restate the question one more time?
It's, okay, that's Ashland Code, section five point O. Down to same page, two eighty-two point two-two, because I'm reading it right now verbatim. And section five point one, parking areas with eight or more spaces for parking areas, eight. Areas of eight cars or more, the following shall apply. Number one of seven, I'm not going to read all seven. Number one of seven is parking area use shall not require back in on a public way.
So, so Mark, so Mark, if the, you're not, you are not backing your automobile out onto a public way. That you would, that's, if you were backing out onto Concord Street, that would be. I, I think that would run afoul of that, of that particular bylaw, but anybody in that lot would not be backing out. Into a public way, out of their spot into a public way. They'd be backing out into the parking lot.
Okay, the parking lot and the one-way exit. Yes or no?
But they would not be backing into the one-way exit.
Okay, I'll, I'll take out the word backing up.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
But it'd still be used to get to the exit, one-way exit. Forward in the space or backing out of the space.
I mean, I.
This is a, this is picture of you're in a parking garage. On any level and you're, and you're parked in the space. Is this how this parking lot is going to be working like in that sense?
Their head in parking spaces? Yeah, you, you'll pull ninety degrees into the parking space. If that's what you mean, I think.
In that sense, yes. And then number two, and this would be, this would, this would be it. Because I was thinking of talking about lighting and sign and stuff like that, but you covered everything on that part. Which means that, that for the sign itself, I'm, I'm thinking, if I can ask Paul. Is the sign going to be almost looking like the new high school sign at the end, once it's in?
I, I can't, I can't say what it's going to look like, Mark, at this point. We, we have not designed it and addressed it as a building committee. So I don't want to, I don't want to say what it's going to look like, other than I can certainly state that our goal is it will fit in. It will be aesthetically pleasing and, you know, the goal would be not to, you know, interfere or otherwise. Distract or, or do anything to the neighbors and, and, and fit in the landscape and, and its surroundings. So that's all I can say about it at this time. I can't tell you what it's going to look like. I mean, the, the, the rendering, the, the rendering that Ramon showed is, is probably the best guesses. Yes, to the idea of the design team that hasn't even gone to the building committee yet for consideration.
Fair enough, I understand, thank you. And the last thing about the, the parking is what is this five point one, number two is. The paragraph says there shall not be more than one entrance and one exit. From such lots per two hundred feet of street frontage or fraction thereof. If necessary to meet this requirement, he uses a range for shared egress. So what does the word egress mean in that paragraph?
Again, you're, you're asking a question about egress means in our bylaws, Mark.
And yes, I would say yes.
Yeah. I'm not, I don't know, I don't know, Peter, do you have an answer that I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer at this moment.
Mark, I think at this point, I'll take that, I'll take your comment into consideration and I can kind of do some. I can do some measurements, but I think at this time, I think we should take another public comment.
Yep.
But don't, but take it and use it. And then ask, it's got to be with the building inspector to see it at the very end, what is, what's, what is passed this. This part of review and egress is got, is going to be the main thing about getting in and out.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, Emma, if we go to our next comment from public, please?
Yep, I'm going to invite Stephen Morgan to unmute.
Hey, good evening. Steve Morgan, I guess I'll go back through in the order that I heard the comments. So the first, the first comment I wanted to make is. I think in the prior meeting, there was a statement that I'd get written response to my requests and comments. Is that still going to happen?
I, I think we decided that we prefer to just kind of provide, you know, try to address the issues via the commentary that we had in this meeting. See, Steve.
Okay, so I, so I should plan at the next meeting to go through all of my comments and get the feedback on each comment because I won't be getting a, a written response.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've covered, you know, in tonight's meeting. I think we've responded to all of the, the, the ones that we feel, you know, we, we, we need to respond to or are. Require a response. So. Yeah, I, I think if there's additional things that weren't covered, you know, please raise them, but I, I think we've. We've made an attempt to respond to the.
Thanks for clarifying because now I won't wait for those responses you promised. So thank you. I'll make sure next time that we have a meeting, I'll be prepared to go through each comment that's still standing.
And if I, if I could just respond, Steve, I, I, I can assure you, I read the written emails that you submitted. We did receive those. I did review them. So I, I speak, I'm confident that we as a, as a board are, are responding. We are reviewing your comment and it has been considered.
Okay, thank you very much, Anna. Yeah, I, I do very much appreciate that. That, that you've done that, but thank, thank you. So, so one of the first emails I sent was about the, the traffic studies. And in particular, I heard a lot of comments tonight at the beginning about the eighty-three spaces and how we shouldn't have used the eighty-three spaces. And how we wish we didn't use the eighty-three spaces. That is what's in the study. So that study, if it's eighty-three spaces, is really of no value until it's fixed. I just, if someone could put the slide back up with all the metrics, which I think was a little bit of a. A numbers game, there's a lot of comments on it, but.
Is this the one you're looking for, Steve?
Yes, so, so I've just observed for anybody who pays attention to the numbers.
This parking analysis is what you're saying?
Correct, which isn't really a parking analysis, but for one reason, they're two hundred and seventy-two spaces, not two fifty. But in the basis of there being two fifty, if you plug the number of two hundred in, which is probably more in line with what the neighbors would want to see. You find out that, that gives you a number that's three point two. It doesn't even move up to the next line. Has no effect on the chart. So at two hundred spaces at three point two, you're still below Westwood, Westwood, which is exactly where it is now.
Steve, could I just understand your comments about, are you indicating you believe the numbers are incorrect with regard to Ashland?
No, what I'm telling you is that people presented numbers here as if it was a professional opinion and a study. And what I'm telling you is if you plug two hundred spaces into this chart, the chart doesn't change. All you do is you put two hundred in the box, the number on the right becomes three point two. And the position of Ashland doesn't move on the chart.
So I think that, I, I don't think that Mr. Nish, Mr. Saini was intending this to be. I think he was just trying to provide other, other data points from other schools, right? I, I don't think, I think there was a lot of analysis that was done. I think this was just trying to present kind of context.
So I just provided you another data point and the data point at two hundred spaces does not change the chart. So that's, that's.
I don't understand, if you could just clarify your comment.
Okay, so, so you have a chart, you have two, four, six, eight towns listed. And Ashland is the two, four, fifth item down.
Yes.
So you change that parking spaces to two hundred, you do your division, you get a number which is three point two, which is still below three point five. The chart hasn't changed. The point of the chart hasn't changed. You're still in the middle of the chart. So two hundred spaces is basically the same as two hundred and fifty spaces as regards to the study in the chart. That's my point.
Yeah, okay.
You can also go to a lot even smaller number and eventually you'll move the chart. But as of right now, a two hundred space parking lot does not affect the chart. No matter what study or whatever, it just doesn't. Okay, so. That, that, that's a comment. In terms of the actual number of spaces, I would really hope the board looks like. In terms of the actual number of spaces, I would really hope the board looks like that, I heard a lot of comments tonight about community spaces. I heard comments about moving the farmer's market to Mindez School. Um, and other things and needing signs to advertise other events in town, down the street from my house, two doors. And, you know, this is a school, I think the planning board should view it as a school, it's not. A townwide venue, um, it may have some other things going on in it perhaps, but this is supposed to be designed as a school. And not, we're not expecting the neighbors to suddenly have a, you know, large thousand-person venue in the neighborhood. That is not the purpose of this project and all those comments, although they may seem interesting and appealing to members of the town, to the community. This is a historic scenic road and it is a neighborhood and it should stay a neighborhood. And that's my opinion, I'm a direct butter and I live on the road, I walk my dog down this road and I don't want a thousand cars. You know, for the six times a year, they need to come up with a better plan, they need to come up with a better plan, we should not be building. A huge parking lot at the expense of my property. And my neighborhood, you know, this has been done in the town and other places and I would hope people have learned their lesson. You know, so I'm, I'm really, you know, I heard a lot of people making general comments, taking a lot of minutes of time. And, you know, saying how they're gonna accommodate the neighbors, there hasn't been a single change or a single accommodation to a feedback. That I have made as a direct butter neighbor of this property, nobody has made any effort. And so I, I really don't wanna keep hearing how people are making an effort, there's no effort has been made by this building committee in three years. And they're putting this literally on my, my boundary and pushing into my boundary and, and that's concerning to me. You know, it shouldn't be this way, and so that's a comment. In regards to the buffering, the next topic that came up was about buffering. So, you know, if we put that chart up, please. There's a thirty-foot front setback which goes along that line, okay?
Hang, hang on one second, Steve, so we can get that chart up, please.
So that, that thirty feet is a front yard setback, right, this is a front yard setback per zoning along Concord Street. And so, so that thirty feet. Is supposed to be a setback and you have a road literally with no stove storage up against the setback. The vegetation that's there, you know, again, I'm looking at this and I can't really tell the background, but I can tell you that the fence. For that baseball diamond is on my property line, I know exactly where it is, there's no vegetation. There's vegetation on this picture, but there's absolutely no vegetation there, I have a few trees at the back of my lot. But the property line and the fence line, I don't know, maybe the architect didn't draw it correctly, but I'm seeing trees that don't exist on the school's property. And, um, so are we gonna plant those trees? I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Can, can you show us the, can you go back to the tree plant slide, which does detail what's being planted and if it. Covers that side of the road?
Sure, sure, let's, let's, let's look at that one. Okay, so, so you see this road line, that's thirty feet from the edge of my property. Says trees to be preserved, those, those trees don't exist. Unless they're putting that road on my property line, which they said the thirty feet back from it. You know, these, these are not trees, there's a dugout there, you know, those of you who've been on that field and know that field, there's a, there's a fence line that goes part of the way. It hasn't been maintained by the town and there's a dugout right there, there's no thirty feet there. Okay, the existing trees are on my property. And so when people put up pictures showing trees that don't exist, that gets me kinda concerned. Because I don't see the town saying they're gonna plant those trees, I don't see a six-foot buffer, I don't see it. The, the new, the new swale that's being built for the, you know, the, the stream that everybody knew was there, that they finally looked at on Monday. You know, now they're talking about bringing all that water into swell along the right side of that photo and down in front of my property. In a swell, there's no, there's no swell on that picture. And you can't have trees in the swell. You, you know, this is, this is not shown as it is going to be, and even on the snow picture. It showed zero location for the snow pile, it's gonna obviously be there, it's gonna get plowed into my property. On the edge of that road, so, um, you know, I think you need to get the engineer to show you accurate information. Um, I have a photo which I can share. Which. You know, relates, relates to the property line, if there seems to be some confusion, I mean, I've, I've shared this with the board. And I don't understand why it's confusing. You know, to, to anyone. You know, this is the, this is the, this is the information, if I may. Let me see if I can make this work.
Steve, you're trying to share a photo, correct?
Um, I am.
Okay, uh, Emma, is he able to share a photo?
No, he can't.
Yep, hold on one second.
She can enable it.
Okay, you should be able to share your screen now.
Well, I wanna share a specific screen, hopefully only that screen.
It should give you an option once you press share screen to only select that program.
Okay, so can everybody see that photo?
Yes, we see a plan.
Okay, so this, so this property, it's called here the Evans property, this is at the corner. This house, the Stevens property is my neighbor, these buildings have been taken down, but my building is right here. And there's a lot line right here. This right of way, this is Fisk Road, this is currently Fisk Road. Okay? So, so you are, you are basically, you got thirty feet back from this. For the front setback and, you know, if you look at the. You change my screen. Wish the controls have moved. Get it back. I think I somehow got everybody into the corner here.
If you stop sharing and then try to reshare, maybe that's easier.
Yeah, I, okay, I see, yeah, it actually, uh, it just went off my screen, yeah, so it became a pop-up at the top, I found it. So if you look at this page.
We're, we're not seeing it now, Steve.
So this is, this is, this is the property deed that goes with that plan, do, do you see this?
Yes.
Okay, you see this wording right here? Based on the obligation of the town, says the, the guarantee assumes an obligation to erect and maintain a fence. From the northeast corner of the Evans property, so-called along the proposed lot line showed herein and along the northerly side of the land. Right, all the way up to the thirty-inch home, that fence is not there, fence is not on the plan. Fence is not currently in good repair, the town has a history of not maintaining that fence, so, um. I think the town is obligated, it's clearly in the original deed, there should be a fence, um, that's a comment. In addition to other screening and requirements, the town should make a fence and make sure it's there at its expense. The town got the benefit of twenty-eight acres, all it had to do was put up a fence, okay? So that's a comment. I don't know how the board feels about that, um, I'd be interested if the board can send me a report. Of what boundary markers were found, I heard a, a comment made that eighty to ninety percent of these were found. Um, I've looked at the plans, I've looked at the positioning of the fence that is there and the fence is not on the lot line where it is said to have been. And so, um, if there's a marker out there, maybe somebody's already put paint or a flag on it, I can't find any markers, so. Maybe the engineer has done that, maybe the engineer can, you know, provide that information, but, um, you know. They said they found all the markers in the, in the earlier commentary, I'd like to see them, I'd like to know they're where they're supposed to be. And that the fence is correctly located and that it's correctly there. So that's a comment.
So. So to, to the applicant with regard to that, you mean, you, you did, your civil engineer indicated that. That they've located the, the markers and that they're there. Is there any response to that, is there any other further comment to Mr. Morgan?
Sure, Mr. Chair, I can provide some additional context to that, so our existing conditions plans that were included in the submission. Do show all of the monuments, drill holes, everything that we found in the field was located on the existing conditions plans. And, and just in relation to the fence, which is noted in the deed, and just to point out, the deed that was brought up on the screen. Was, um, part of our research, we, that deed was something that is in our files, has been since we started the project. And was part of the property line retracement effort, the land transfer was done prior to the installation of the fence that is out there today. And the fence is not a property line marker and, and that is something that has been determined many times by land court. Uh, a fence is not considered a property line marker, however, the monuments are, those are a definitive. Location for property lines and, and ultimately property line corners and our professional land surveyor, when he did the property line retracement. Utilized all of the monuments, drill holes that we found in the field and lined those up with all of the information from the deed. And the property line as shown on our existing conditions plans actually lined up very well with all of the information we found in the field. So we do believe that the property line as shown on our drawings is correct.
Okay, well, I'd like to verify that, um. And so, um, I did not see those on your drawing, I will go back and look for them, um, but I in particular didn't find those iron rods. That are supposed to be there, um, and it looked like somebody moved the markers up on Fisk Road on that end. So when I looked for them, I didn't see them field marked by your engineer and I didn't see anything in particular that shows that they're actually there. So, um, if you, if you've done that work, um. I, I appreciate that, I'll go back and look at the drawing again, maybe I missed it, um, so thank you.
So, 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 so Steve, one thing I wanted to just, um, comment on, you were looking at the. You were looking at the plan for the, the, the loop road and the, the trees planting around that parking lot. I mean, if, the one thing I'm confused about here is, here's Concord Street, here's the baseball field. Here's the driveways in question, so, I mean, there's a substantial amount of tree, trees here behind your property. So I guess you're saying there, there are no trees behind your property. So I, I'm just trying to reconcile what you're saying with what I think I see here, like, to, to the applicants, are those trees? Behind this baseball field all planned to be removed as part of putting this road in, is that what's happening?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, those trees are on my property, those trees are not on the town's property and that's my point. There, those are my trees, and some of those, that's an old photo, some of those trees are not currently there, but I don't know the date of that photo.
Yeah, I'm not sure, it's just Google Maps.
The point being is that's my property, not the town's property, and so when you look there and you see the fence line there next to the dugout. That's the fence line, right, that's outside the tree line, so. You know, you need your buffers and your additional items on your property, not my property. I can see directly through those trees and I can see those ball fields. With no, no trouble at all, I could see people working out there in the fields on Monday right from my deck, so those are not dense trees. And they're on my property, so the idea that there's thirty feet of trees is shown on the slide is just incorrect. Because the town doesn't have thirty feet of trees and your slide you just showed, Joe, proves the point, because you can see the fence at a couple of points right there next to the ball field. That's the property line.
Okay.
And so what I'm concerned about is what happens from that property line on to the town's property and what. Things are put there and whether there's a road put there and whether there's a swell put there and, and how close that comes to my yard, right, that's my whole concern. I don't wanna hear noise from that, there's a noise bylaw, you know, it, you know, that's my concern, that's why I'm making my comments. Because if the board thinks those trees are on the town property, they are not correct. And I'd be happy to sidewalk it with any board member who wants to, show you my concerns firsthand, um, this, this access road is literally right behind my house. And my neighbor gets it worse, but it's literally right behind my house.
I mean, I, I think it would be helpful to get a clarification from the applicant relative to that, um, at the next meeting, just to see. You know, to really see the, the boundary a little bit clearer, so we can see where the trees are, where they're not, um, and I think that will help us, uh, clarify that.
Th- th- thank you very much, and I would also say that if you look at the tree screening in the parking lot. That's not screening my house from that traffic, it's not screening the noise in the loop road. That's all stuff that's between the loop road and the town's parking lot, so that is not helping me as a resident, it's not screening me as a resident. It's, it's putting that road right behind my property in visi- visual for my deck. And there's no fences required by the deed, should be there, there should be at least six feet, the minimum of six feet of vegetation. That doesn't mean six feet, it means a minimum of six feet, there are other districts in town in the code for Wildwood and other places. The buffer for non-residential use is a hundred or three hundred feet between, um, commercial, it's a hundred. Between, um, industrial, it's three hundred, this is a zone part, this is a parking lot next to a house, there should be at least a hundred feet here. In my opinion, but, you know, it's not as explicit perhaps in the guideline, the guideline just says more than six feet, six feet minimum. So I don't want it designed at six feet, I'm a neighbor, I want a decent buffer there and I want my fence. And so that I don't have to deal with this, you know, we got other issues about whether it's Article ninety-seven or not, whether I win or lose on those, I don't want a bad project behind my house. Right, I want a good project that keeps the traffic and the noise and the light away from my house, as has now been acknowledged. You know, you look at the lighting plan, there's a fixture right behind my house, the peer review made a comment, said that the light pollution was on my property. It's right in the peer review and I thought they could have gone even further, but it's in the report, so there's no question they designed it. You know, affecting my property in my backyard.
Yep, and, and the applicants are gonna respond to that.
And I appreciate that people are, are now admitting that that happened, but, you know, a week ago, nobody was even agreeing it was a problem. Just like the people for three years have said there's no drainage in the field, now we know there's a, a, a wetland system that runs from behind the field all the way next to my house. And now they're talking about bringing all that water down along the side of the property, under the temporary access road in a swell behind my house. I don't think that's a good idea, don't think that's necessarily helpful to my property, but it certainly means you need to put more space there. And move that back off my boundary, because I need a setback, which is not currently shown, because people are busy maximizing a parking lot they don't need. That's my, my, my opinion, that's what I see happening, I don't think we need two hundred and fifty spaces, you maybe need one fifty. Maybe it's two hundred because people have other needs, but it's not two fifty. So, um, moving from that point, um, scenic road, um, I heard, I heard the chair of the committee talk about a scenic road. And he minimized the discussion about the scenic road to, to walls and trees. The purpose of a scenic road is to preserve the look, nature and character of the scenic road. And specifically not to take down trees and walls, putting up modern electronic signs on a scenic road. In view of the neighborhood is not in keeping with a scenic road, whether it's explicitly called out or not, it just shouldn't be there. You know, frankly, the town has a sign there now, they can't maintain, you know, the father's repainted the wooden sign that's there, it's dilapidated again. The town hasn't even maintained a wooden sign and now they want it eight foot wide, not, not a four foot or a three foot, they want an eight-foot wide sign. As I look at the plan that was shown to the board, I saw, um, eight, eight foot one. By two foot seven, up high, six and a half feet, out on the roadway next to the sidewalk, that's outrageous. You wouldn't even want that in your downtown district, you know, and, and, and this is a neighborhood. You know, so in my opinion, I thought the comments in the board were on point, if somebody wants to put something on the school building directly or away from anybody can see it. Maybe that makes sense, but as, as on the street next to my house on a scenic road, that's exactly what we shouldn't be doing. I also note in the, in the scenic road bylaw, you're limited to driveways that are twelve feet wide, this project has way more driveways than twelve feet. They're looking to expand the driveways and consolidate the driveways. Um, and, and I, I have a specific technical question about the flow direction of traffic, as I look at that parking lot. In the back right corner for the loop road, it looks to me like the traffic comes from the. Left-hand side around the back. Yet the parking is on the left hand side of the road. So are we going to put? Or do the architects not know what side of the road the traffic is on? Why is the parking on the left side of the road if the road is going? You know, next to the fields like that. I just don't understand why that parking is not on the right hand side of the road near the fields.
So so so, Mr. Chair, I can address that. So. Yeah, so it it's for snow storage. It's for accessibility of emergency vehicles to get to the field. That's what the 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 fire and 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 police chiefs want. So all parking along the group road is on the outside to ensure accessibility of all the emergency vehicles to the site.
Which means all the children and all the the little league kids are walking across the street in the traffic. Instead of walking out of their car and into the field. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You know, those kids that are of that age, you know, we get kids out there. We have three fields now. The DPW rents. There are kids out there. All the time in the spring. You know, the kids were back this year. They park behind Mendez now. It's a big event, lot of kids, lot of games going on out there. And now you're reducing this to two fields. And you're providing essentially inadequate parking for the use of those fields. And then you're trying to block it off. It makes absolutely no sense to me that this be done. You know, the the parking that's currently there at that end of the site is being eliminated with no excuse, no reason. You know, neighbors and people in the neighborhood parked there. You know, I I I heard statements about how the parking lot is so full. That whole left hand side of the building is like. School, school maintenance services and their trucks and all kinds of other stuff parked over there. Those are not teachers parking over there. You know, so this whole idea that it's full and, you know, so forth, it just doesn't make sense when you go over there. And and to the and to the engineer who said this was a refinished high school. You know, look at the design plans. You know, there's an elementary school built on the right hand side. A high school was built on the left hand side. There was an admin addition done. There was a roof addition done. This isn't a converted high school. This was built as an elementary school. And the high school was built on the left side of the site. And, you know, it's it's like, let's get our basic facts right. So so anyway. That that's 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 a feedback to the board when you're listening to quote expert in testimony. You should challenge what you hear. With with the facts. So moving on to 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 the next. Topic they heard.
So Steve, there is there is somebody else who'd like to make a comment. So if if you want to do this one, and then maybe we could let Kathy Rooney. Ask for questions and then if you want, if you have.
Thank you, Joe. I I don't want to be disrespectful to Kathy. I know she's a committee member on the design review and heard some of this last night, so. I would, just at this point, if I might make the.
Yeah, go for it.
The other the other comment about the peer review since I started talking about the peer review. So the peer review did have specific comments in it. In regard to the placement of trees being incorrect, it had specific comments in it. In regard to the lighting. So there were and and there was one other topic. So so these are things that. Again, I I understand we're going to get addressed. I don't think you're voting on this in this meeting or any. Near term meeting, but I would like to see those plans and those revisions. And I'm particularly interested in the screening and vegetation there. One other question on that. I guess I just I just want to make sure everybody knows. So so those those driveways are also wider. They have multi turn lanes on them and, you know, and so forth. So when you look at that scenic road and how much pavement there is and where everybody drives. I think you should consider the traffic flow and that should all be in the traffic study. So anyway, I'll stop there. Kathy, I guess you're up next.
Thanks, Steve. Good, I'm sorry.
I'm going to invite Kathy Rooney to unmute.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for hearing my comments. I'm. Commenting as a member of the public, not as design review committee, because we have not made a decision on this yet. Can we go back to? The parking lot and show the location of the geothermal wells in it?
Yes, just give me. One minute.
Thanks, Bill. That's what you were looking for, Kathy?
Are all those little round things in the parking lot the geothermal wells?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. I kept hearing about them and I didn't I didn't have any idea where they were. So. How much of that parking lot takes up about two thirds of the parking lot, half to two thirds? Is that correct?
Yes, approximately, sure.
Okay, and what's the other that what looks like a building there on the right hand side? Or is that drainage? Is that?
I'll let, yeah, this is a underground recharge system and I don't Jared.
That's that's correct. Yes, an underground recharge system as part of the stormwater management design.
For the parking lot?
That is picking up runoff from the. To the north. It actually does not pick up runoff from the parking lot itself. It's picking up runoff from part of the roadway on the north side of the new building. And a portion of the parent pickup drop off roadway. Just to the north of that system. Most of the parking lot or or a good chunk of the parking lot drains to the infiltration basin, which is located in the landscaped island.
And that's at the bus. The landscape island.
He's talking about that one just right there. He's circling it.
Correct.
Yeah, there's two.
Is that the location of the swell that keeps getting mentioned?
No, the swell is running along the east edge of the site. Just east of the perimeter route.
And where's the outfall pipe for it?
That's where it will connect to the existing pipe that discharges to the intermittent stream at one thirty Concord Street.
Okay, is that in a floodplain at all?
It is not. There is a floodplain on site. It is where the pond is at. The front of the school, right off of Concord Street. There's that large pond and wetland. And there is a floodplain there, but there is not on the east edge of the site.
So why wouldn't why wouldn't you expand that under? The driveway cagement area? To collect more. More of the the water from the pavement itself rather than put it so close to the property lines.
I'm sorry, I didn't I didn't quite understand that question. Could you say that again?
Yeah, I'm curious why you're not expanding the under.
Underground recharge system.
Right.
Underground recharge system under the parking lot.
So that system, it's there's a few requirements that govern the design of these systems. One of them is groundwater separation. So that system can only be so low. We need to provide at least two feet of separation to seasonal high groundwater. So that system in our previous design, this goes back a number of months. We had originally wanted that system to be a little more centered in the parking lot, but based on. Site elevations and groundwater elevations, we had to move it to the east end of the parking lot to provide that minimum two feet of separation.
So basically what you're saying is that's the only place for it in there.
Either there or further north. We could extend it further north.
Well, if you extended it further north, you'd get more storage capacity and you'd take some pressure off of the. The little traffic island at the south end of the parking lot, correct?
No, the infiltration basin. What goes to the underground recharge system is not from the parking lot. The infiltration basin is picking up about half of the parking lot. So even if we made that underground system larger, it would not change the design of the infiltration basin.
But it would take pressure off the infiltration basin in a in a in a large storm event.
I don't believe it would because the drainage area going to the infiltration basin wouldn't change. We would have to reduce the area going to the basin in order to. Have an impact, reduce or increase to have an impact on it. In increasing that recharge system size does not impact the infiltration basin. Because they are they are they are two different watersheds.
Kathy, what's your concern? What are you driving?
I'm getting to it. I'm getting at it right now, actually. So you've designed this for a one inch storm. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. We've designed the stormwater management system for the two, ten, twenty five and one hundred year storms.
So. The one hundred year storm, how many inches in an hour is that?
A hundred year storm is, I don't have the exact number, but off the top of my head, it's about seven plus inches over a twenty four hour period.
Okay, so you're confident that this entire system here will hold seven inches? How about an hour?
So the the design of the system, it's not intended to hold all seven inches at one time. All of these BMPs, we have a number of underground systems and surface systems. That are intended to collect, treat. And recharge where we can. As well as mitigate peak runoff rates to be below existing conditions. So. The systems won't hold seven inches necessarily, but they are designed to hold a portion of that hundred year storm, so we can hold it back. And we throttle the discharge rate from those systems to keep peak rates below existing.
Okay, so let me ask this a different way. What? If you got four inches of rain in an hour. Could this site hold it without overflowing?
Uh, yes, I believe it could. Yes. Typically, a hundred year storm. The intensity of a hundred year storm is somewhere around five, five and a half inches an hour at its maximum point.
So you're basically saying this would hold four inches of rain. Or five, five and a half inches of rain in an hour. Because we're we're getting those kind of rainstorms now. That's a that's not an unusual occurrence anymore.
Correct.
All right, so. I don't think I've actually seen a planting plan for this site. I've I've looked. And I just saw what you put up in your presentation. So I'm curious how many evergreen trees you have as buffers on. The south side along where there's any neighboring houses, basically.
In the bioswelle areas, we will have some. Both broadleafed and needled evergreen. And certainly, as was pointed out this evening, we do have the that thirty foot area between the property line and the. What the driver will be in honor to do additional planting in that area. And it's also been pointed out that the drawing is not complete. But we have and and actually, when you look at kind of the view from kind of the kind of that property line side. You have the thirty foot buffer, but then you also have the buffering of the bioswelle itself. In order to block views.
So how mu- how much of those buffering to block views trees are actually evergreens?
Well, on on this plan. It it would be those. Those darker trees that you see. And this is an opportunity. We can easily add more.
Okay, well, I think I'd I think I'd recommend that. And where is the snow storage in relation to all these trees?
Well, the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Marshall. Can can we just go to the slide that shows the? Thank you. Pause one second.
Apologize for the quick jumps.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so as pointed out earlier, that the snow storage is not going to the bioswells and so we. You can see where we have the opportunity, we have the positioning to actually put these trees in to create those buffers. And still accommodate the the snow storage.
So you're you're saying based on this that the snow storage is blue? Or it's gray?
Blue, the the roads are gray. So think of the the, you know, that gray color is both the parking and the circulation roads themselves.
The blue is snow storage.
Yeah.
Okay, because if I'm not mistaken, that's on some of the greenery. That we were just looking at. That's why I'm asking about it, because that's the the best way to damage and kill trees is to to plow snow into them. I've seen it countless times in parking lots, so. You know, I'm going to want to know what the maintenance plan is for replacing trees that get damaged by snow.
Okay.
And then I saw in the in the peer view, it said the Fisk Farm Historical Site. So. What is that exactly? And where is the historicals? Parts to the site besides the grave?
That is the grave, the fist that his the peer review was referencing that grave.
And is there some sort of interpretive signage going on that? Or going with?
We will be maintaining that grave. Part of the plan, yeah.
There's there's existing signage, I believe, now, Kathy.
Yes.
Right, but it explains that I'm assuming this piece of land was a gift to the town at one point.
Sold to the town. In fifty three.
Okay. So it's just going to be some sort of a sign there that says who's buried there?
Is this, yeah, there's a signage there now that will be. Carried over in the new design.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a there's existing sign. We've had conversations about this in in the. Committee meetings about potentially ways we can look at it in the future to. Enhance or 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 more draw more attention to it and highlight it more too. So. That's something that's been talked about and will continue to be talked about as potential opportunities for. Other ways to highlight it.
Okay, so. I'm concerned about the construction traffic and I heard. In the design review meeting that there's going to be some specific directives to the construction people about where to drive. And where not to drive. And so. I'm just hoping that a lot of that traffic doesn't end up on. Fountain Street, which is also a scenic road, because the traffic there is already horrible and. People driving recklessly and too fast is sort of a way of life at this point, and it's it's gotten worse post pandemic. So whatever we can do to mitigate that and send all that traffic on the one thirty five would be greatly appreciated.
It that is the plan and and Phil, Phil Conroy from Shama, you can. Talk any more about it if you want, but the those all those trucking routes will be written into the contract of of everyone. So the. The idea is that it will will go to one thirty five and and not take any of the other routes.
Construction traffic, who would somebody? Talk to about that?
So there'll be lots of opportunities, so. People will be able to contact. So Shama is going to have both the project manager and superintendent. They'll they'll contact information will be available for them. Compass Project Management has a dedicated onsite person and Compass. Is our representative, so represents the town's interests. And so they're going to have a onsite person. Think of that person as kind of like the clerk of the works that you would have had at the high school. And so there's lots of, we're going to have, we're publishing how to make contact, but people have no shortage of contact. We they'll have the contact information for the Shama team, the Compass team. They'll obviously be able to contact the school department, me. That there's no shortage of ways to do that and. You know, Shama can be responsive to ensuring that all of our expectations, our subcontractors are being met and. They have, because it's written in their contract, they have a ways to enforce that. And Phil, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that. Phil probably can't unmute himself. I don't know. Can you make him a? Co-host in case he he does want to chime in on any of these? Thank you.
It's Phil Conroy, is that?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, so the current plan right now for the the trucking route, as Paul described, would be. To have it prescribed, written in the specifications that are contractually owned with provisions that essentially allow us to make alterations to the construction route. Currently, we're working to develop that route. The the plan is to. From the south, so people coming four ninety five south to have them utilize one thirty five. Coming from the north, there, I believe there's an existing trucking route. Over Route nine, over Roque Hill Oak Hill Road down to Main Street. So we would have them, assuming people's GPS would take them off that exit.
Um, so we would have them, um, assuming people's GPS would take them off that exit off of four ninety-five, we would have them uh, when coming from the north, uh, follow that trucking route, um, at their um, wha- whatever's more convenient for them. Um, the, the comment, uh, relative to Fountain Street, um, I'm curious uh, to come off of one thirty-five, the, the only option is, from what I can see, is to, to come up Fountain Street.
So, so, I, I believe, and Kathy, you can add here, I think she's talking about if you came from the school, you went to the light, you took a left on Fountain, that direction. She's concerned about that tra- that route, I believe.
Yeah, if you're coming from the Mass Pike or Route nine, you can cut down through Winter Street in Framingham, and, and the first road you hit is Fountain Street, and the second one, if you go over the bridge by Keith Tech, is one thirty-five. And if you turn down Fountain Street, you'll be like all the other, um, cars and trucks that roar up and down the street.
Let's hear what you're saying. So our intent right now is to, is to funnel construction traffic from four ninety-five, so we would request that they take ninety to four ninety-five and then elect.
Yeah.
Their.
Prefer them not to be on Fountain Street and preferably on one thirty-five. I mean, that's the state road, not the scenic road.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm concurring that we would.
Yeah, yeah.
Want to keep them on one thirty-five.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you just, uh, misspoke and said four ninety-five instead of one thirty-five.
That's fine, is, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking about it, and since we can, there'll be some way for us to contact the clerk of the works or somebody like that, that's fine. If, if it seems to be that that's where, what's happening with the traffic.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so this is Mike Quinlan from Compass, and, um, uh, as Paul noted, we're your owner's project manager. Uh, there will be signage with contact information for, um, our onsite people and, and Shawamette's onsite people. And as well, um, I'll be able to be reached as, as will Phil. Um, so there will be, there will be no shortage of, uh, phone numbers to be able to call, and we will, we will make sure to post a protocol on, on how that would work. Um, and again, this is gonna be contractually written into each of the subcontractors, so, uh, if they do fail to meet that, there will be repercussions.
Great, thank you. So my last question is this, um. Several months ago now, uh, we came up with some new, uh, tree and shrub planting diagrams that um, provisionally have gone to, um, the planning board, and we're working on, um, getting those accepted into the, um, town bylaws. And they're the best, the new best management practices. So I did notice in some of the plans that I looked at, that there were some tree planting diagrams, and they showed the trees in the baskets. And that is not the best management practice anymore, and my final comment about that is if Mother Nature and God had intended trees to be in baskets, they would have been created that way. So I appreciate that we use our the, what will soon be our new best management practices in town for all construction, because we want this project to be the best project that it can be. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and, and just Kathy, if I may, uh, uh, the, the plantings, obviously, as you know, are, are, are the last things we do, um, and so uh, there, there'll be lots of opportunity for feedback and, and honing, so we'll, we'll welcome that as we get closer to the, to the end. We'll, we'll have a lot of flexibility there to, to make the right modifications as, as, as we get closer.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned that, um, once the planning board signs off on this, that once the decision gets made, that it has to be conditioned in the decision. So that's why I'm, why I'm bringing up now. It's kind of like the sign. I'm kind of wondering why we have an electronic sign and not the a, a sign like the Town of Ashland sign, and why we're adding yet another design of signs in our town. Um, because those, those Welcome to Ashland signs are beautiful, and they have lasted really well. They're, they're made to last really well. That's why we have them. So. I just would urge the board to think about that, but I'm concerned that these things need to be conditioned into the, into the planning board. The, the decision. I've never known them to sort of truncate a decision and do part of it.
Well, I mean, our, our plan usually, the approved plan usually does include planting detail. Um, I think what you were referring to, Paul, is that the planting, the plants go in the ground last, or what were you saying with?
Ri- 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 right, so, so, so it's the last thing we do, and, you know, as, in, in just to kind of key off what, what Kathy was talking about, this is a little bit different, uh, of, of a project, right, in that, you know, the typical your special permit process is a, uh, for-profit developer coming in and wanting to do something um, that isn't necessarily acting in the town's best interest, right? And uh, in this case, this is a town project with, um, you know, lots of different boards having input, including the, the building committee um, itself. And so a lot of times with other special permits, it's conditioned even to what colors things have to be and things like that, right? Um, and, you know, my expectation and, and what I will be asking the board is, is that some of those things that you would normally put into uh, a, a special permit for these developers that you defer, um, to the building committee for those things like uh, picking out the, the color tone and things like that. We always love for input, and we welcome to, you know, we're, we're happy to come back with, uh, decisions that we want to make and get additional input, but unlike some of those other types of special permits processes that uh, like I said, are developers that are coming in for, for-profit things and not within the town's best interest. We have lots of committees, including, uh, the planning board and CONCOM and, and, and design review that are all looking out for, uh, the town's best interest. So it's, it's a slightly different process, I would, I would hope, in this case. Um, but we want to make it, uh, inclusive and, and come back for feedback anytime the, the, the board wants to. So I, I would hope that there's some flexibility, and we can always say if, uh, if we get different feedback and want to make a different decision in the plantings, we can always come back before, uh, the board with that as well. You know, this isn't, this, these, these, this isn't a project that's gonna go up in twelve months, right? Um, so it's not, hey, this is one-shot deal, uh, for even if things like the, if we wanted to move the, move the sign, we'd come back and talk about that. If we wanted to put it in the, you know, in the eye, in the, in between the, um, uh, the access roads, right? So, uh, that communication will continue, and, and some of those things that you would typically condition very strictly in, uh, the special permit process. Uh, you know, I would hope it would be slightly different here, because we do have other town committees that, uh, uh, are managing this as well.
Thank you, Paul.
So Kathy, is, is that your final comment, question at this point?
Yes, at this point, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other, uh, hands raised this time. Do you, Emma?
Um, I believe, uh, Stephen Morgan re-raised his hand. I'm gonna invite him to unmute if that's the case.
Yeah, yeah, so I just raised my hand for the other item that I mentioned earlier. Um, if you have another couple minutes, uh, let me share the screen I want to show you here. So I sent an email, um. And this is, this is an existing planning board plan that has previously been approved. This is, this is regarding the development to put in the drainage that's back in the back corner at the beginning of the stream by the wetlands. And so, so I want to point out to the board that you see this existing forty foot right of way, that's Fisk Road. This is at the top of Fisk Road. And I can make it smaller if, if you want to see. This is Concord Street going up Fisk's Road, connects here at the top of Fisk Road, essentially where you want to build your temporary access road. And so notably, there was a temporary temporary easement of construction here during that project. But also very notable, and I think we keep dancing around in this discussion about steep slopes, is this twenty-five foot wide slope easement that is already on the property. This is here for a reason. It was put there during this project. There's a grass strip right there on Fisk Road, anybody can go up there. That was put there to stabilize and ensure there wasn't a problem on that slope, and it's an existing easement that, to my knowledge, I haven't seen on any drawing or any discussion, and every time I bring it up, people talk about behind the school. But this is an existing restriction, and it isn't being addressed, and it's an existing known problem that the board already ruled on. And so I understand changes occur, but, you know, um, this is, this is one, this is one piece of information that you should, you know, ensure that people don't come up with good ideas that make bad decisions. You know, this is here for a reason. Just because people want an access road there doesn't mean it's the best spot. And I would also show you, um, um. You know, when you look at, I guess you had the slide, I can't, I can't show you that slide, um. I think it might have been, yeah, here it is. I can show it to you on this slide. So you notice this access road, it's showing a little funny here, but this, this access road that people are talking about building right here, this is my lot. Right? This is right, right here, thirty foot setback. So this is the crest of the hill on Fisk Road. This is the highest point of the straight section of Fisk Road. And when you look at, um, how that is presented, you know, here you have it with elevation, so you're essentially talking about coming in here off of Fisk Road, here's your twenty-five foot buffer existing, and then you see this steep slope here? I don't have the exact calculation, I'm sure the engineers can tell you how many feet this is, but it's, it's a good, it's a good number of feet. How many lines is that? See how steep it is?
It's steep, yes, it's steep.
And, and, and people are talking about cutting in a road. Started out it was gonna be twenty feet, then it was forty feet, because they need a fire station there and other things. And so you're talking about a forty foot wide road down this, this grade, literally right behind my property. This is shown with my current building. Right? This is my yard, here's the fence. You know, this vegetation isn't really, this is, this is like leaf cover. This isn't real vegetation. This is grass right here, right? You walk back here, there's a, there's actually a, uh, an, an existing, uh, fitness track, right? Sits right behind this dugout, walks right here. It's, it's asphalt, it's not vegetation. And so you see whether you put the property line here or at the fence line, you know, this is the overhang of my trees. There's no trees there. And, and so I just illustrate the point I was trying to make earlier. Once you get behind here, there's a little bit of cover on some of this, but this path, this is an example of a path that kids use today. So the traffic study didn't include that. They said everybody gets a ride to school. I get kids walking by my house all the time. Kids walk down this path. They also walk down the path up here, there's another path over here. And these accesses to school for these neighborhoods are being cut off by the new design. And, um, maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's not. Um, I personally think more kids should walk to school. Um, I walk to school, kids still do walk to school. And, um, and so I would just, you know, urge the board to be aware of what's going on here, and have the engineer and the peer reviewer review all this, because this looks like a problem to me. And it looks like, you know, water, and again, remember, now we're gonna put a swale. This was just discussed, I'm gonna bring a swale along this, this edge. I'm gonna bring it all the way around and connect it back to the stream. And, um, that's right behind my house. So, so that's what's now being discussed, it's not on the plans yet. Um, but there's a swale and a vegetated barrier that needs to go here. Not just between the parking lot and the town's road, between my lot and the town's road. And right now, all the plantings, you know, people are assuming they're using my trees, which that doesn't count. You know, I need, I need a buffer, this needs to get back away from the edge of my property, and it needs to not bring water next to my property, right? That's my viewpoint. I think there's plenty of room here, so that's my feedback, and, and I guess I'll leave it there, um, uh, for today, if, 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 if that's alright with you, um. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, thanks, Steve. Thanks for your comments and, and, um, perspective, so I appreciate it. The applicants certainly, um, hear you and, um, hear what you're saying and see what you're saying, so I appreciate that. Uh, planning board members, any other comments or questions at this point in time?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a general comment, um, and I'll just speak for myself, um, though I, I, I believe it's true for many members, if not all members of the board, that, um, you know, while i- in a way, we've kind of gone into listening mode here a bit tonight over the past several weeks, and, and, and even before, we have been doing a lot of reading about, um, from various documents, questions that have come up from the public, looking at the peer review, um, looking at the questions there, reviewing that ourselves, um, doing the research with the bylaws to try to understand these, um, these questions, getting questions back to Peter and Emma, so they could be, um, transferred to the, to the design team on this project. And so really, this meeting was about, I, I, I think the design team, um, did a really good job in answering a lot of those questions that were in those public comments that did come out of various other sources over the past weeks, um, if not, if not really longer, questions that we've had. Um, and so for really, for us, this has been an opportunity to, on a planning board meeting, open to the public, to let that the public comment have the time in that meeting. Um, obviously, we asked questions where we felt maybe certain issues weren't, um, being brought in, um, on the line of those public questioning. So, um, and I think those questions were answered very effectively too. So I just wanted to give some information about there, that if the planning board seemed a little bit uh, quiet out there tonight, it was really to give the public a chance to, um, to get their questions answered. And we feel like we, uh, like I said, I'll let other planning board members speak to this if, if they wish, but we feel like the, the questions we had and the issues that, um, maybe were out there, questions raised previously, questions raised by the peer review, um, were answered effectively, so.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think the, um, I don't think the amount of speaking from public or public participation was abnormal. I'd certainly think, you know, in cases of last week's meeting where we had a, a massive number of participants who wanted to speak, where we tried to limit it, but I, I don't see tonight as being abnormal or out of the norm in terms of what we typically do at these meetings, but yeah, I, I think it's really, it's useful to hear this stuff, it's useful for the applicants to hear it, and it it is, you know, it, it resonates in our minds, and we think about it, and it shapes how we ask questions and what we change with projects and what we try to shape the project, so, yeah, I, I agree.
I, I mean, I'll add for myself, and just speaking for myself, and this may, may um, respond a little bit to some of Catherine's points, um, and other public comment we've, we've heard today is, is I, you know, my philosophy is not necessarily that a public project of this type is any different from any other project before the planning board. That's my personal uh, view on that philosophically. I don't think simply because this is a school project, it's automatically in the public interest the way it's presented. Um, I actually think that we have a duty as the planning board to put projects on equal footing unless the bylaws require otherwise. Um, and I'm not familiar with any bylaw that puts a public school project somehow, you know, easier waivers, e- less regulation, et cetera. Um, in fact, I think for-profit projects can sometimes be more in the public interest because they're easier to oppose. There's less controversy, people feel less nervous opposing them, and therefore issues are aired out a lot more publicly prior to coming to the planning board. Um, and I think people sometimes have a hard time countering public proposals. It makes them, they don't want to speak against public proposals. Um, so I think we have a duty as a planning board to look very uh, carefully at a public proposal. Uh, it becomes leadership for other proposals, um, how we treat a, a public proposal. Um, and frankly, it offers guidance to developers as well, private developers, um, and gives them context for when we're willing to be flexible. So I want to share that, that's my personal view, uh, I cannot speak for other members of the board, but I, I want to respond to some of Paul's comments. And also assure, you know, Catherine and other folks who've spoken, that at least my seat on the planning board, I, I don't, I don't look at any proposal here as having um, easier time obtaining waivers than others.
If, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh, just I want to make sure my comments were clear, and it, it wasn't that it's easier to do anything, uh, but it was responding to Kathy's, uh, thing about the level of detail in the decision, um, that you do have, you know, uh, discretion as to what level you want to, uh, whether it be the color of, of, of the side of a building, the roofing or anything like that, that has been written to the sum and That has been written to the some and not into others, as far as a special permit anymore, that in those cases, that some of those. Uh, decisions be, can be left to the other town, um, town bodies to do that, not that we want an easier time. Uh, on any waivers, that is absolutely not what I was saying, we want, we want to set the example here of. And provide, if we don't, if we don't comply, uh, you know, provide a compelling reason for the waiver. Uh, I would not expect the, the board to support it, so, uh, my comments were more around. Uh, Kathy's comment that, hey, listen, whatever we decide right now, and we, again, we're not even at sixty percent CDs. Um, is set in stone for the end of the project, and some of those things, uh, I'm, I would be asking the board to. Uh, allow those types of things to defer to the other town, uh, town boards. And can put conditions in to come back with for additional feedback, but, um, it was more of those details that control those other, other types of projects, not the waivers.
Thank you. Okay, um, so. Last call, any, any, anything further, otherwise I think we should talk about continuing this to a future date and time. Okay, so, um, Peter and Emma, our next meeting is the twelfth of August. Um, correct?
That is correct, Joe. I believe we left the time slot, uh, at the beginning of the meeting.
We left forty-five minutes from seven fifteen, that's correct, so. I'd entertain a motion to continue this public hearing. Um, on ninety Concord Street to, uh, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-one at seven fifteen PM.
Second that.
Let's throw a roll call vote, please.
Anna Chesmanitsky, aye.
Joe Roberto, aye. Motion passes five zero zero. Thank you. Uh, Paul and all of the applicants and experts that were here this evening, thank you for your time. And energy, um, and we will, and for the public comment, and we will see you, uh, on the twelfth of August.
Thank you, uh, just, uh, I wanna re-invite the, the, any board members, if, remember, we do have, uh. Uh, models and exterior, uh, samples, material samples at Mendez, uh, so you're free to go over there, um, if I'm available, you, you can let me know, and I can. Uh, try to meet you over there, answer any questions. Um, we also, uh, you know, we, we want to make sure we're gonna. Get to, um, some closure, um, within the next few meetings, so we know we have the outstanding peer review comments that we'll be getting to you at the beginning of the week. But anything else, uh, that we, uh, we, we need to provide, if you can, uh, send that over to, to the design team so we can ensure that we're, we're answering all the. All the questions you need to, uh, to get to end, uh, end the job on this, we'd appreciate it.
I can do that. Okay, so our next, uh, sorry, somebody have comment? Okay, so our next agenda item, um, moving on to the Hillside Estate. Bond reduction. Peter, would you like to take this one?
Sure. Uh, so, uh, Hillside Estates was a, I mean, was it definitive subdivision, which was approved a number of years ago? The developer is Mr. Steve Hickey through Richmond Development Corporation, I believe it's eleven lot subdivision, it's also known as High Street Extension. At this point, the subdivision has totally been built out. And all the houses are, you know, there's a house on each lot. Uh, going back to November sixth of two thousand and nineteen, um, the planning board, well, in that November, the planning board released the final lot, which was lot eleven. So in this case, uh, in scenario, the planning board, uh, requested a, uh, security bond to be posted by, uh, the developer. In a letter dated November sixth, um, from our third-party consultant G, GCG. Uh, who has been working with the town forever, they came up with a cost estimate of how much it would cost for the town to finish the roadway. That amount was two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, one hundred and, and, and one hundred and two dollars. So back in November of nineteen, Mr. Uh, Steve Hickey, and through Richmond Development Corp. Posted a security bond of, uh, the amount noted, um, and the planning board fi- signed off on the final lot release. Which allowed Mr. Hickey to go ahead and build the final house lot, um, which he has done so. So at this point, two thousand twenty-one, uh, Mr. Hickey has completed, um. All steps within the subdivision, uh, which include the curbing, the final paving of asphalt. Um, and so at this point, um, Mr. Hickey has requested that we, uh, reduce the bond. Uh, and at that point, I notified a GCG and they have, um, come up with the attached, uh, letter, which was sent out to the planning board. Uh, the remaining work really pertains to the as-built plan that needs to be submitted by Richmond Development Corp. Um, so in this case, uh, the remaining work on this subdivision is nine thousand nine hundred dollars. So the request tonight is to a, to vote to reduce indoor, uh, to reduce the, uh, existing bond amount. From two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, one hundred and two dollars, to nine thousand and nine, nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Today, I was on the phone with Mr. Hickey, uh, and he noted that the final as-built plans are in the works. And he is hoping to have High Street Extension, um, adopted as a town road, um. In the coming, I would say, at, at the coming town meeting. And so please note all the as-built plans as they are submitted will there be, will then be reviewed by GCG, our third-party consultant, I would say. I know that was really quick, however, uh, does anybody have any questions?
So in your experience, Peter, it seems like this is a. Uh, now that GCG has reviewed it and given their suggested amounts. That there isn't anything out, e- else outstanding with this, that we should give us pause about releasing this bond, that the work has been done and verified by GCG.
The work has been done, it's been verified, as the work was completed, which also includes the paving, we had, GCG was actually onsite. Uh, from a third-party review standpoint. Overseeing the implementation of the final. Wearing course, I would say, so in my, in all my experience, this is a very mechanical process. Um, and I believe there is no red flags at this point, um, to not move ahead and reduce the bond. If there was, GCG would have made note of that.
Those stormwater, uh, retention issues, none of those systems which have been in place or have any issue or failing?
No, the stormer, the stormwater is, is, is working as it designed, uh, and, uh, therefore. Um, that was not a red flag, that came up, uh, GCG was onsite. No less than a month ago, reviewing all the work with Mr. Hickey. Down to the point, you know, of all the concrete bounds and rebar markers to highlight all property boundary lines.
Any comments from, uh, the rest of the board, any other questions about what we're doing here, but what it all means, we okay?
I will make a motion that we approve the bond release as stated, not, not having the exact numbers in front of me.
So I'm just gonna say, it's the bond reduction, so.
Bond reduction.
So just to state the motion, uh, the, you know, the planning board makes the motion to reduce. The, uh, security bond for the, um. Hillside Estates definitive subdivision from the existing balance of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. One hundred and two dollars. To nine thousand nine hundred dollars, um, which will cover the final as-built plans. Uh, through adoption of, of the public way.
Oh, sorry, Joe. No, that's fine, you want, you, you said some moves? I did. Okay, got it. Yeah. Okay, let's throw a roll call vote.
Make Christian, aye.
Anna Chesmanitsky, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Roberto, aye. Motion passes five zero zero. Okay, um, so minutes, June tenth and June twenty-fourth. Um, obviously, it's late, um. Do we, we should probably get these done, um, should we, are, is the board ready to go through these?
Yes, I already gave, um, Emma my comment, so I was perfectly fine with one of them, and I had one, one, one sentence to be changed, do I need to publicly state what the change was?
So yeah, my apologies for not sending out a revised draft of both the minutes I received comments on, I'd be happy to walk through the comments on both of the minutes that I've received, if that works for the board.
Yes.
Awesome, so. Let's see, so if we want to start with the June tenth minutes, I received, um, some edits from. Tricia, and I think it might be easiest if I share my screen just to, uh, briefly show. Okay, so this is the June tenth minutes. She's struck the sentence on line sixty-one and sixty-two, and. Tricia, did you add or edit the yellow highlights?
It was, it, it was mostly just an edit for clarity, um, that, that I, yeah, just to make, to make it more clear.
Excellent. Um, and then, moving down. Eighty-four to eighty-eight is struck, and ninety to ninety-four is edited for clarity as well.
Exactly. Just, it was a lot of information, and I was just trying to help it read more clearly.
And then again, moving down, you can see, uh, lines one sixteen and one seventeen were struck. And then I think moved down to line one twenty-one.
Yeah, this, this was the case with trying to understand that we were just taking off the number seven and eight, we weren't trying to erase the text. That were next to seven and eight, and so it was a little. Rewording to try to make that clear.
Changes look good to me.
Deepa, uh, Lakshmi, you okay?
Absolutely good.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of June tenth. Two thousand twenty-one as amended.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Actually, Christian, aye.
Anna Chesmanitsky, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Roberto, aye. Motion passes five zero zero.
Okay, and then for the June twenty-fourth minutes, uh, Anna sent in an edit to line thirty-nine forty, I. Also call this for clarity, um. It now state reads that confirmed that the application will also address the parking lot condition and safety where before. It said, um, also addresses, so. So that's the one edit I received on those, unless anyone has anything else.
This is a, this is a small thing, but just on line twenty-one up there, it took me, it took me a while to get to read through that sentence until then. And I think it's because a comma is needed after then. So it's until then, an appropriate time to return this item to the agenda will be determined, but I got stuck on that for a while, it's a small thing. Otherwise, I'm good.
No further comments or edits, everybody's okay with those?
I'm good.
Okay. I make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of Thursday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one as amended. So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Actually, Christian, aye.
Anna Chesmanitsky, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Joe Roberto, aye, motion passes five zero zero. Um, okay, uh, Peter and Emma, are there any, um. Administrative items or other, uh, items to report on at this time?
I think due to the time of the, you know, it's ten forty, I think I can, um, I think there's nothing pressing, and, uh. I'll be in the office, and so if anybody tomorrow, Emma and I will be in the office tomorrow, so if any of the board members wants to follow up. Uh, please give, uh, you know, shoot us an email and or give us a call. And, uh, if, if anything pops up into, to anyone's mind, but at this point, no, I think I'm all set.
I think, um. I know that at the August twelfth meeting, that we have a posted time for. The one hundred Chestnut, is one hundred Chestnut Street, uh, which is seven forty-five or eight o'clock, we only allotted about forty-five minutes for the school, so I, I mean. I think clearly the school is not gonna be done in forty-five minutes, that's my gut, maybe I'm wrong. Um, so I think it would just probably be a courtesy. Uh, to this one hundred Chestnut Street, a- as well as, well, I don't know what we can do about the public at this point, but. Um, we should probably let them know that. It may not start at that time, but they probably still need to be there, right?
So, I, I'll run, I'll, typically, when we do start a, you know, set a specific time, Joe, we are going to have to stop, or if, if. If the school.
It's always the earliest, Peter. It's always usually the earliest, like, we post the time. But that's the earliest it can commence, I mean, we've blown through timelines like that many, 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 for years, frankly, so unless you have it posted differently. Such that. It actually forces us to stop talking at that point, um. That's not how it's worked, but you.
Okay.
I, I'm. I'm. I don't know, should we discuss this, might as well, right? Briefly?
I think you're right, that we might need more time just to, uh, but we have done it before, where you, sometimes you have to, oh. Ju- just make sure we go through the pro, no, make sure we know what the proper process is on that date, if we need more time. And, you know, even if people need to wait for twenty or thirty minutes online, we can let them know that we're gonna get there, but we need to finish this up first, so. Find out whatever the proper process is, that we do it on the twelfth. Anticipating that we might need more time.
I mean, I'm not saying it's good form, people waited hours, people waited two hours past the time posted in the past.
Yeah, right.
It's not good form, clearly, but we're doing the best we can with.
What prevents us from just continuing the school issue at the forty-five minute mark?
There's some deadlines that we, we don't, um, we want to make sure we just kind of take care of this in a. And in, in an efficient way, because while, um, while we can take all the time we need, they also, they're also, um. With this school being. Construction schedule. Trying to, trying to take care of things in a certain amount of, um, months. Would then not affect the construction schedule and the school opening on time, um. Couple of years down the road, so. Um, so those, th- this is why we don't wanna. Have it go on, we just want to be efficient about it, and in that, I think in that regard, um, because they went to that construction schedule in the last couple of meetings. But in that regard, I think it's also, whatever we want them, and, and. Peter and Emma, we're probably taking some notes about this, but whatever we want to see from them next week. So that we can get to a point of. Discussing and making a decision, right, that, that we need to come to, we need to get a list to Peter. And Emma, so that they can get the list to the committee saying, we want to see these things. And make sure they're included in, in that presentation for the twelfth, or whatever they're providing.
I mean, do we want to talk about that now, or do we want to individually reach out to Emma and Peter, like, how do we?
I don't know that we can talk about it now, because we haven't done, I, 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 I agree with you, Anna, we, realistically, we. We probably should have done like a recap of this is what we want, but. I don't, I don't think we can go there right now, just.
The best thing to do is, you know, I, I took some, I took notes and, and I understand what's going on, you know, and the next steps. But anything in an email would be, you know, you can always shoot me an email or call me tomorrow in the office. But anything in an email would be, you know, you can always shoot me an email or call me tomorrow in the office and and I can relay any message to the applicant, you know, I think the number one thing is, I'm gonna in my, you know, one thing in my eyes is I think we want that property line bound staked out. Uh and uh for verification. Um and once that's done, we can all go, we can have notification, and we can actually go out and see it with our own eyes. Um so I think that's one thing that popped up in my, my, uh on my radar. Um but like I said, I'll be in the office tomorrow and, and, and I can be contacted by email, email as well, and everyone knows how to get in contact with me.
And it's also a challenge scope of the redesigning the utilities, it sounds like with that pipe. It's gonna have some major rework on his plans as well, so I think that's that may answer a lot of the concerns tonight, but I guess that needs to catch up. Because those are two very important things that.
Yeah, and uh, and they did get the review comments from G C G. And they're, are working on revised plans and they're still waiting for submittals, and they're waiting for a written response on those comments, which will there be sent back out to G C G, our third-party consultants for review.
My only question is, so we have one meeting on August twelfth, do we have anything else? What's the next date that we have our planning board meet, because I have on my calendar twelfth and nineteenth.
So we're gonna meet on the twelfth. And then I have one on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
I'm looking at my, my calendar and it's a
There's usually a week gap between it, so that sounds right.
Yeah, I, I think it was just really kinda dependent upon making sure people be able to come depot with vacation schedules. Is anybody gonna be away the week of the twenty-sixth?
Oh, um, I am actually. But um you know, I should be able to make it happen, so.
Okay.
Doing Zoom meetings on vacation is part of the fun, Tricia, right? I mean.
It is.
It's what you think about, really, when you think about it. You know?
Got in Zoom, man.
Yeah, it's the best. It's just the best.
Oh, so Peter, are all the meetings going back on Zoom now because of the um I heard all the companies are scaling back, I'm going back to office now, so is our town going back full Zoom again? Because I know we started hybrid very soon, right?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think uh, excuse me. I think it was always a purview with the planning board to come back in September. And uh I think it's a fluid, it's a fluid environment out there right now, with everything that's going on, so uh I think it's good that we, we are continuing to use Zoom, utilize Zoom. Um and I think in the, over the next couple of weeks, I think we can monitor the situation. And we can make a decision. We have the ability as the planning board to continue using Zoom through April twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-two, I believe. Uh as the, as the governor's orders, you know, I think we all watch the news, we all know what's going on, and I think we can all um come together. It, you know, a- and watch the news week by week, day to, day to day, week to week, and come up with a decision. And you know, mid eye, by at, at least I will be talking to the members in the ne- over the next couple of weeks, I would say. But I'm monitoring the situation and um, and I'll reach out to some colleagues just to see what other planning boards are doing as well.
A couple of meetings ago, Tricia had mentioned the idea of having a working meeting where obviously, where we can brainstorm about issues and that, you know, I think when we leave these things to the very, very end. We're all tired and we're all kinda cooked and we're done. Um and so I'm just kinda wondering at some point if there's any room in having one of our meetings start with something like that for half an hour, rather than leaving it to the end where it never happens, because it's not gonna happen.
And I actually, and I, I was just gonna say this, because it was getting too late, you know, that I'm, I'm hoping, I'm thinking um that, and it kinda depends on what's happening with COVID again, but it would be really great to be able to meet no, in-person, i- in a way off-site um for a retreat. It would still be open to the public in the, in the same way that the school committee does and the select board does. Um obviously, that would be finding a time where we could, we could do that and really engage, but just to um speak about that, yeah, maybe at the, at the start of some meeting, maybe September meeting, you know, maybe we take a half hour and just discuss how we could make that happen, you know, before we're all exhausted and tired at eleven o'clock at night, so. But I, I would, so would love to have that planning meeting that's really not about which bylaws we wanna tackle, but about goals and procedures and mission statements and those type of things that we should we should have as a planning board, I, I, I think, but it's a, obviously, it's a matter of discussion between all of us, so.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, can we, can we set a twenty-minute, thirty-minute public spot sooner than later to talk about the mechanics of that? It sounds like the mechanics of it even need to be public, right? We can't just like decide to do a retreat, we have to talk through it, I think.
So just to answer that one real quick, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to the select board's office, cuz I, you know, obviously, and, and talk to them from a mechanical standpoint, or what's the best procedure. I think, looking forward, I think the second meeting in August is the first meeting where we can open slot carve out the first half hour of the meeting. So, you know, we will now, you know, anything that gets continued from our meeting on the twelfth can, you know, the first hearing can start at seven forty-five. And then that would give the planning board a fifteen-minute window, I mean, a half hour window at the beginning to talk about this, you know, to talk about procedures.
I would actually ask that that be moved to the first meeting in September.
Okay.
Which is not only like the start of the school year, and so the start of new things, but it's not during the last week of summer where, you know, I am on vacation. But will be attending for the important things, and not that goal setting isn't important, cuz I brought it up, but um but I would, I would like to move it to the first, to the first meeting in September instead of being online longer during my vacation.
Okay, I, I agree a hundred percent. And um, and we could always do, you know, whatever works best for everybody. If everyone wanted to do something in the morning. You know, we have the ability on Zoom to take an hour from eight to nine and have a Zoom meeting and in, in which it would be posted and, and part of the public record, I would say, so. But I can, I can work, I'll work with the, we'll, Emma and I will work with the planning board members to set that up.
I, I think that sounds great. I, I think a meeting like that in September, um it sounds, it sounds, it sounds, Tricia, like you're suggesting kind of an in-person you know, session, which is fabulous, uh but it also sounds like we may need to kinda talk about the logistics of that in a public way, or how, even what we wanna talk about publicly, right?
Yeah, like I said, we can, we can find out um what the, the school committee does, what the select board does, do, they, they, they both have um retreats, which are, you know, a- announced um uh posted, open to the public. But they're not um on camera, and um at, at least in other years, can't say last year, they were, they were in person. Um so a real, a real working kind of meeting, so um I, I think that would be I, I think that would be great to do, but obviously, it depends on COVID, depends on people's schedules. Um depends on posting it correctly, um but I'm just kinda following the lead of what, what other boys, boards seem to do successfully. So.
And I can, I'll work on that over the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Okay, so anything else? Final, final, final call.
Well, you don't have to go home, but you can say, yeah.
So uh entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting at ten fifty-four P M.
So moved.
I'll second.
Right, roll call vote.
Actually, Christian, aye.
Oh, and good day.
Anna Tzmanitsky, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye. Thank you and good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Hi, everybody.